Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Kennedy City Council. This is our regular meeting. We have on the second Tuesday of each month. Today is February 9th, 2021. Thank you, sir. It's 6:00 PM and I will call this meeting to order. I will call the roll at this time to determine if a quorum is present. Councilmember Sines?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Breones?
Present.
Councilmember Douglas Meyer?
Here.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
All councilmembers present, we have a quorum for this meeting this evening. I'd like to say one thing before we move on to the next item. If everyone would please, if you're here for public comments and you're planning to come to the podium, please use the microphone. We've had some difficulty getting the sound picked up on the iPad because of the social distancing due to COVID. There's a microphone there at the podium. If you'll use that when you're speaking to the council, we sure appreciate that. So our next item on the agenda, if you will all rise in prayer. And if Councilmember Nguyen, if you will, please lead us in prayer.
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we ask that you would walk with us in God's and all our actions and what we do. That everything we do be for the betterment of this community and we do it in glorifying you in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is citizen comments and we have several. The first citizen comment is Alberto Valderramos. Mr. Valderramos, if you can come forward, please.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Baker, may I remove my mask, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lin, is the microphone turned on?
It is.
Maybe hold it very close.
Can y'all hear me?
Not very well. Is there a volume adjustment over here? Oh, that's better. We got it now.
I got it. Can you hear me?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, councilman mayor. I just first would like to thank Mayor Baker for reaching out to me. I've had requested public record and until this day I have not received anything, but Mayor Baker has been contacting me and also Council Sines as well. Thank you for reaching out to me. I'm just here to give a public record on item 14. I do support the fire department, whatever decision that they would like. I support them 110%. I hope council takes no action or tables that item because the fire department does a wonderful job with our community. Everything they do is for volunteer. It's 110% of what they give and I do support them whatever they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valderramos. The next person signed up for public comments is Shelby Dubnik. Mr. Dubnik, if you could come forward. And please use the microphone if you can.
Otherwise the glasses fall down.
I know.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Shelby Dubnik. I live 125 Lubbock Drive. I am a county commissioner and this is city counties in my precinct. In my precinct. Recently I was in Collins Station and Texas Association of Counties had a, we had some training and one of the things we do at Association of Counties to keep us up to date on legislative issues. And I'm here to talk, to inform you or ask y'all to consider supporting, I mean, being against Senate Bill 234 by Senator Hall and House Bill 749 by Representative Middleton. This bill would prohibit use of taxpayer funds to be used by a association or a lobbyist with reference local government. Say y'all are part of the Texas Municipal League, it would, if this bill goes through, it will prohibit you from using the municipal league with taxpayers' dollars. You cannot, it will not allow you, school boards, counties, hospital districts, anybody that belongs to an organization or uses lobbyists, it will not allow them to do that. And I don't know about y'all, but I did not have time to go to, to study every bill that relates to the county or to the cities, even though we try, but we can't, we can't do it. We don't understand everything that we do. So what I'm asking y'all to do is, is to consider as a resolution, if y'all can consider, talk with the municipal league, see what they're doing, or your other organizations that ever y'all belong to, get with them, with their council and see, you know, what, how they feel about it or what y'all are, or what their take on it is. We, the county, we voted this morning to take action where we're going to send a resolution in opposition to this, to this bill. Now, there'll be another bill coming out. There's House Storm Resolution 32 and it's, I don't know how y'all, we're here at the city to do it, but we always get unfunded mandates. And this, we're trying to get a, this House Storm Resolution 32 by Representative Shine would be against unfunded mandates. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner Dubnik here. Time has elapsed, but thank you.
I'll talk to you much.
No problem. Mr. Lin, I'd like to request that we place an item on the agenda for our next regular meeting in regards to what Commissioner Dubnik was speaking about. Would it be okay with you if you can coordinate with Commissioner Dubnik to get the wording correct on the agenda?
Yes, sir. And I'll reach out to TML as well as he suggests.
Yeah, so I think you need to, I'll forward your resolution, but I think TML may have another.
Most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We appreciate it. Next person signed up to speak under public comments is Loretta Teal. Ms. Teal, if you could come forward. Ms. Teal, if you could use the microphone. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think it's going through, but.
Hold it very close.
Okay. How many of y'all have gone to your open meetings, open records classes? How many of y'all have read your books? How many of y'all have studied your law? Have you, sir?
Oh, yeah.
You have. Good. I'm going to quote y'all some law real quick. I came in here over 10 days ago, requested open records of a city ordinance, which is a law that the city council has made for the citizens of Kennedy. Should be no question whatsoever. It should have been handed over as soon as possible. I have yet to see it. Okay? How the Public Information Act works. The officer of the public information must promptly produce public information in response to a request. Promptly means that a government body may take a reasonable amount of time to produce the information, but may not delay. It is a common misconception for cities to take 13 days. They must respond promptly. You have an ordinance book? Three pages. That's all it took. I need y'all to understand that your city administrator has sent the information to your city attorney, not to the Attorney General of Texas. Wanted to let you know that that was in violation of mine rights to public information, violation of the Attorney Generals, which they have been notified. Council, you need to pay attention to what is going on around you. Y'all are a type A general law city. Y'all are a city council, mayor, form of government. This man does not dictate to you what goes on. Mayor, you have the right, as well as city council, to put items on the agenda, not leave it to his or her discretion. I know this as a matter of fact because I used to be the city secretary here. I used to be the city administrator here. What you did was wrong. And council, because of what he did was wrong, you as a council ought want to be paying for that. How much do y'all pay your attorney? Think about it. He's directing all of the information to your attorney at a cost.
Mayor.
Not to your Attorney General.
Mayor.
Ms. Teal, thank you. Appreciate your comments. The next speaker, the final speaker under public comments is James Sutton. Mr. Sutton, if you could come forward.
Thank you, Loretta.
Yes, sir.
Hey, can you hear me okay, Joe?
It'd be better if you use the microphone. It's very difficult for the camera, the iPad here because it's so far away.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try that. I'm not going to sit up here and feed you guys a bunch of sour grapes, okay? But I do want to go over some things with you. Some of you may be aware, some of you may not. The first one is item number 13, the R and B part. You guys are going to have a little debate with Mr. Robinson and I, right? Are you guys aware of an audit that was conducted in 2018 on the water buildings? Has anybody been, had access to that? I didn't expect you to answer. If you do, great. You should know that your readers aren't your problem. You should know exactly what that, what your problem is with the buildings. Now, if you didn't receive that from your city manager, the next question I would ask is, why would I send you into a battle unarmed? You could save a lot of time and a lot of money if you just repeat that audit. It's real simple. And we must spend $300,000,000 on the year. So moving on, the fire department.
I just, one thing, Mr. Sutton, I just want to respond and say that I haven't seen the audit, but I'll look into it and definitely take a look at it. You said it was conducted in 2018?
Yes, sir.
Three years ago? Okay. Thank you.
He's fully aware. I even know him. You haven't got that? You're the mayor of the town?
No, sir.
You gotta be kidding me. Wow. I can't believe this guy. Okay, moving on. Fire department.
I can.
I want you to understand this. Fire department has been through turmoil at the hands of a city council member year after year after year. He can say no, he can say yes. There's record of it. It's one thing right after the other. And I'd really like to present it to you and you do whatever you want with it. If you want to give it to your council, great. If you don't, don't, but you cannot deprive the public of that information. And I have that information with me. So do you think it'd be okay if I walked up and gave it to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to put it together. It's from the beginning to the end, years, it was the year before I was here and when The city operates on ordinances and resolutions, not on one person's word. Thank you. Not on one person's word. Many, many years ago, the residents of the city, there was an election and they wanted to make certain that their families, their friends and their neighbors would never, ever be ruled by one individual alone.
Mr. Sutton, can you use the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'll try.
Thank you.
Lastly, is item number 19, I believe? Employee evaluation. Get those employees wrong. They don't bother anybody. They're trying to make a living. And if you're going to come up with an evaluation form and you're going to allow this man to evaluate, please include one for him.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Appreciate it.
I'd like to present this to you.
Yes, sir. Please bring it forward.
And please make sure your council reads this. It will let you know the story that this man tells over the smallest things ever. And it is in there and it is highlighted.
I'll make sure everybody gets a copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes citizens' comments. At this time, instead of moving to item number six, we're going to move item number 14 up in the agenda. And Mr. Lin informed me yesterday that he is recommending that we set this item aside due to the fact that the city's attorney has not completed drafting the ordinance that is, needs to be drafted before the city council considers this item. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for one of the council members to set this item aside.
I'll make a motion that we table item number 14 for the March meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All in, I'm sorry, call the roll, Mr. Lin.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All in favor. We will resume. And just for those in the audience, that, that's, I think that's most of the people who are here for that item, so if you would like to excuse yourselves at this time, you're absolutely welcome to. You're also welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, so thank you all for coming. This brings us to item number six on the agenda, departmental reports. The first departmental, departmental report is Public Works. If the Public Works Director could step forward. Good evening, sir. And if you could use the microphone, please.
Good afternoon. Like I need it?
Yes, sir. The iPad is so far away from where the speaker is, it's very difficult for people to hear who are watching at home. And with COVID, we have a lot of people watching at home. They're not comfortable coming to city council meetings, a lot of them, and I totally understand that.
Good afternoon.
If you could hold the microphone pretty close to your, thank you.
I need to stand.
We need to stand. I agree. Hopefully, we can get one soon.
I'll start out with the water produced. We produced, this is water produced to the distribution, 40.8 million gallons. We had a water loss of 4.7 million gallons, 11.47%. We had a flow at the wastewater treatment plant of 34 million gallons. We had a count of rain of 0.4 inches for the month. Our departments of Public Works completed 2,262 service orders for the month. And we had no NOBs for the wastewater plant. We had two SSOs that we reported to TCEQ. And I still recommend that we stay in a stage two water restriction according to the numbers. We are well below, we could go to a stage one, but I'd like for us to stay to, at stage two if we could. We had one boil water notice for the month and looks like I spelled that wrong on my sheet, so it's probably wrong on y'all's too. We got some stuff going forward. Been working on the Texas Water Development Board of Water Loss Survey Report for 2020. It is due March 31st and then I'll be working on the water loss audit, which will be due May 1st. We're still working on our meter changeout upgrades for that. And we have replaced some large meters in the city. We replaced one out in prison with ultra-sight mag meter. It's a very nice meter and a lot more accurate and it needed to be replaced and we got that done. We also replaced the one in Ashland and the one in Park Place Landing, which was a huge, huge meter. So we got those big ones out of the way and we've been moving forward with our meter updating, replacing program. We're nearing the end and anybody that's ever went through, which you probably haven't, but meter changeouts, when you get down towards the end, it kind of slows up a little because you got all these, you went first. So hopefully we'll have these done by, hopefully by the time the bills go out this following month, we're shooting for it. We're doing our best on that. And then another good note on the water side, Austin Bryan passed his class C water treatment. He now has a class C water license, which is good for that plant and good for the city. That gives us three C or above operators and the water for, the water treatment plant.
I have a question on that, Mr. Lin.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Is he going to get his pay adjusted for that? Are we, do we increase?
We will eventually, yes, sir.
Chuck, you bring your mic down. No, thank you.
I talk loud.
It's still, it has to come through the speaker.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that people that get licenses, that we reward them for getting these licenses.
Once he shows value with the license, we will.
So we also sent out the lead copper letters from last December. Got those done, sent out and we'll also be starting the new round for January, June, lead coppers. So you'll see us probably in the next week or two, passing out bottles again. We have to do 40 for every six months, so you'll be seeing us doing that. We had well 16 go out, had a motor go to ground and we had that repaired. We replaced everything in the hole when they pulled it out. Those pumps run about almost 24 hours a day. It was right at roughly three years ago when it went out before. And so we had that happen on the well side. With water outage letters that we sent out on Sunset Strip.
Sir, the last time that well went out was in July of 2019, so it wasn't three years ago. Just giving you heads up.
Okay.
So.
Appreciate that.
Yes. So what, how did it look? How long are these new pumps going to last? Are this, everything that y'all reinstalled?
Well, here, we're lucky if they last probably three years because they do run 24, they almost run 24/7.
Good.
And the windings on these pumps are not as good as they used to be years ago. That's my personal opinion because I've had well pumps that lasted 15 years, but they didn't run 24/7 like ours do here. So I figure three years, two years, if you want to go two years on it roughly, that's technically four years. That's probably pretty good for all the water that pumps. And I have a sheet here somewhere, I can probably tell you how many gallons it pumped if I had time to look it up over the last year anyway. But I have all that at the office I could look up if you want more details on it, I We, as most of y'all probably noticed, we got Bullard Street paved and looks really good. I think we had several good comments on it. Over the next month or two, we still got some, a little bit of cleanup that's off of the road, kind of the edge of the tree lines and stuff that we'll have to get in and pull out and rake out and clean, but right now we didn't want to do too much of that and get too much dirt on the new roads. So we got most of it before it was in there and what's left is what the city will have to clean up and pick up, mostly when the water line, the sewer line was replaced through there. So that's all I have for now, listening, but if anybody has anything they'd like to...
Are there any questions from the council?
I just have one, Jerry, on the water loss. What would that do to, I mean, just like one leak, a combination of leaks?
Well, I have no idea. Water loss is water you cannot account for. That 11.47%, I can't account for. That's why it's called water loss. We go through every water leak. We have calculations that we use to calculate the water from every leak depending on the size of hole and the length of time it leaks. But there's a lot of things in the town and of course, this could be attributed to us changing these meters out right now too, because a lot of the meters that were, nobody uses any water, like vacant houses or weekend getaways and whatever, those meters there that have been replaced, they will not activate until half a gallon or so runs through them without a little tool. So there's probably 50 or so of those in the city that we haven't had time to go back and activate yet. So when we go back through the books and go to those places and activate those that have a zero consumption because people pay bills but use no water, at some places it just happens. Because they don't live there anymore, they keep the water on just in case they want to swing by. So there's a lot of contributing factors. Sometimes our math may be off a little bit when we flush a hydrant afterward, we fix a water leak. You know, we have some, like I say, mathematics that we go by and we use. And there's a lot of things, like a lot of the fire lines, a lot of the industries around here, they don't have a meter on them. You know, so maybe it was their time of the year to come in and have their fire lines tested. So, I mean, there's lots of variables that this could account for.
Okay. I was just wondering because it was such a high number.
Right. But I might need to know, AWWA and most of those people, they say if you've got a really old system and you can stay around 10 or below percent, you're doing excellent. We usually account for a lot of water and stay below 10% on our calculations. But whenever I do the math, I have a sheet in here somewhere that kind of shows that stuff, but you know, that's, that's the description of water loss, water you can't account for. So we keep an eye on it, you know, we look for things and try to make notes and keep of it with the best we can and that's the number I come up with after we do all the math. I think we had 16 water leaks for the month that we accounted of 737,000 gallons lost to worms and flushed lines of 98,150 and so forth on, it's about the third page over in my report.
Any other questions from the council? There being no further questions, thank you, sir. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Continuing with item number six, the next report is the police chief report. Chief Ash, if you could step forward and please use the microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. For January report on animal control, a couple of quick updates. We completed the repairs that were required by the last inspection we had. We wanted to paint concrete and then paint some other areas. That concrete has been done. We received our certificate today, so our shelter is back certified again next year, so we're good with that. They did, the animal control had 40 calls last month. They picked up 16 dogs, 14 cats. We had two dogs reclaimed and then another 12 were adopted and were sent to the rescue. We did have two posses. We wrote three warnings and one citation about animal control. On the police report, we have, the camera systems are now open, operational at the Parkway and the sports complex. Those are all connected now and working together. Last thing I need is internet connection and that should be done end of this week or we'll have remote access to those as well. So they'll see everything from the Escudino Parkway and Sports Complex to the walking trail. I'll go to Park and follow them and I'll be able to see it off of my laptop. They got the internet installed yesterday. The IT guys should be out there, hopefully end of the week, get it set up and have access to that again. Call boxes have been arrived. I've talked to all of us about this before. We're buying the emergency call boxes. They, big tall tower says emergency, go push the button, call for help. We have four of those that will go in the parkway, the walkway areas. I have those now, I'm just simply waiting, next couple of weeks we'll find, we'll get those installed out there. They use a cell system and solar, so they're just, you literally put a piece of concrete, bolt it down, and then it's self-functioning. So, hope we get those out there in the next couple of weeks. For our crime stats, I put a little note on there, burglaries continued, burglars and thefts continue, remain below average, so that's good. And you see that across the country, that's kinda been the way it is, property crimes down, violent crimes up. I contribute that to people being at home more, probably instill stuff in people when they're at home, but they tend to wanna fight with each other. Fortunately, our assaults have remained on an average pace. Traffic stops and citations were above average last month. Still have my traffic guy aggressively working on the truck routes, and he's out there working on the truck routes. Our inspection for the recognition program is actually tomorrow, so our onsite is, it occurred tomorrow, the inspectors are here tonight, so they'll be here in the morning to do our inspection. Knock on wood, we're done, we're good with it. They should be here all day tomorrow and maybe some on Thursday to give us our final report. Once that is complete, then we will be, they recommended to the committee that we be recognized. Once they do that, we become a recognized agency, we'll be one of about one hundred and seventy agencies in the state that have achieved this. There's about nineteen hundred agencies in the state, so if you do the math, you can kinda see we're top ten percent there in the state, so we're pretty happy about that. For your information, the police chief's conference this year is in Fort Worth. Skipped it last year because of COVID, but they're gonna have it again this year in Fort Worth. At that conference, Kennedy PD will be recognized as a new recognized agency. At a luncheon, it'll be about twenty eight, twenty agencies being recognized. All of you are welcome, if anybody wants to come to Fort Worth, just let me know, and I'll make sure and get you on the list for lunch. I know it's a long way to go to Fort Worth, but we'll be there, but you all are welcome of course. Yeah, just let me know if you wish to come. We have a new reserve officer we're gonna be bringing on board soon, just wearing a uniform for him, kinda what we, I thought I'd have it done by today, but we don't. Officer Ramirez was a deputy at the sheriff's office. He is, will be a reserve for us, he has about six years' experience. Our officers know him well, and they like him, and they work well with him, so we're gonna hopefully get him on here next week or two, see if I get his uniform in place. That'll be our third reserve officer. Have another one, another person express interest, and then we can build up a little more as well. And that is my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for the chief? There being no questions, thank you, Chief, appreciate your report. Moving on to item number seven, city manager's report, and the first on the list is departmental reports, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Lynn, could you use the microphone, please?
Um, so we have, um, uh, that's gonna work. So netted zero on the staff for the month. We have one new hire, one person left the city this month. There will be no fire department report tonight, the fire department failed to get the city people the information we needed in order to file the report after numerous attempts. So we don't have that data there for you guys this evening. Code enforcement report tonight, they issued sixteen residential building permits, three general contractor for plumbing, four electrical and two HVAC, nine commercial building permits, three general contractor, two plumbing, three electrical and one HVAC. We have one residential demolition permit issued. Bureau Veritas performed seven total inspections for us this month. We had eight violation letters that were issued, the certified now, one was for public nuisance, abandoned vehicle, five was for litter control, highways, grass roads, material for dangerous buildings. We closed, they closed and filed twenty-two cases in 2020 that were still left open and pending. The breakdown on that is nineteen of those were litter control cases and three other dangerous building cases. There were two demolitions performed last month, which the council awarded in November. That was at seven oh four South Bank, two oh two. We had twenty-six residents utilized. The municipal court saw about one hundred and forty-seven defendants, they collected a total of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-five cents and a net to the city of twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-two City auditor came out and performed the steelwork. They gathered the basic data that they needed and did the interviews they needed to do. They're back at their office, they're gonna begin starting to compile everything for the city audit. We send the management letter back to them tomorrow for the audit of the fire department, and then he'll get involved with doing that as well. The new website's up and running. I wanna say that Mr. Drewa, the individual who we're using, has been a very big asset to the city and this website. Anything I've asked Mr. Drewa, he has done. I'm very impressed with this individual, and I'm going to be using him going forward to update our website, so come tomorrow, whenever I want all these documents, the council packets, financials, all the reports, when I want those uploaded tomorrow, I'm gonna scan them in and send them to Mr. Drewa and have him upload them for us, so they'll be available to the public on the city website, which is the purpose why we're wanting to make sure we get things taken care of that way. So he's very quick with what he does, and so I'm just very impressed with him. I received a phone call from an individual off of Graham Street by the name of Mr. Cruz. I don't know if you all know Mr. Cruz or not. Mr. Cruz called and he had voiced his concerns. Graham Road for the most part of it was dirt and had lots of ruts and mud and things of that nature, been very difficult for him especially to get any of that. So I instructed the public works department to go lay two-inch limestone rock on that road from a certain point all the way down to where the value stars are at the very end of Graham Road. I also instructed the public works team to go ahead and quick walk into the people's drives that were affected by this, and that would help them be able to get out of their drives onto the road, give them traction all the way down, and they are taking care of doing this for us. We are gonna put this on our radar to go back and to asphalt that all the way down so that we have a complete road, and again, help me seven thirty-two, is it from seven thirty-two all the way down?
Seven forty-three, seven forty-three.
We're, we'll make sure, we're gonna, we're gonna put that on there to do that, we're tying up a few things first before we head that way. So that is on our radar to take care of that. East Main is moving along forward like we had hoped. We had the bids ran, and tonight I believe we'll be going over that as well. It's on the agenda tonight, but we're looking at starting the work by March on that. So that'll be good for the residents down there on East Main. Cruz, a well project, it's at, Weisinger drilled the pilot hole for well number seventeen, and they went to a depth of twelve hundred twenty-nine foot, and they didn't have any incidents in that, so wet walk will be going out next week to look at everything and monitor everything on that as well. It's kinda what we are in that show.
Questions, council? Questions for Mr. Lynn? Mr. Lynn, I have a couple of questions. When will the new website go live so that it's visible to the public?
Sorry, I'm...
How long has it been live?
I've been seeing things being put up there since last council...
Oh, so I, I looked at it the other day, it, it's not really noticeably different than the old website, is it?
The design is not different yet, we're still gonna work some things on that, but we have more control over the content, which was a lot of the problem we had last time, couldn't upload stuff to and all that.
There's still a lot of outdated content, though.
There's still some that we're gonna move around and take off, but like, for example, you're on there now, each of the councillors and their districts are on there now with their email. So we're, we're getting there, but we've got it running live so people can at least see these things, and then they'll be able to see the changes as we make them, such as when I go to Mr. Drewa tomorrow with basically all this packet of stuff we're presenting tonight, and I have him section that out and put this under certain tabs in that, you'll should be able to go up there by the end of the week and click on a tab and see the financials, or click on a tab and see the public works report or stuff like that, you know, for the public. So we're definitely getting what we need to be on.
I, I noticed Lanny Holland is listed there, he no longer works for the city, does he?
No, sir.
Okay, yeah, if he can maybe find anything that's out of date or inaccurate and get that fixed, that would be appreciated. One other question in regard to the open records request, I give you the opportunity to respond, I believe...
No, sir, I will not do that, it was done during citizen comments, I'm forbidden to do that, and it's not in my report.
It's your prerogative not to answer the question or respond, so.
That is correct, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn?
I do, I do have a question. Is, is Mr. Drewa, the cost for him to do the website, was that a flat cost, or is this gonna be an ongoing cost?
There's probably gonna be an hourly rate, with Billson hourly rate, this was not something we originally were gonna do, okay? Originally what we were gonna do was, we were going to have Mr. Drewa just move everything over from mixed marketing, and then Mr. Drewa would just do the big ups, like I would send him the list and say, okay, maybe it has transparency and do this, and he would do that for us, and then we would originally go ahead and upload to those things. But over the course of the last week or so that I've been having, I mean, he's just like Johnny on the spot, I send him something and it's like, would you please upload this? And before I turn around, I get emailed by saying done. So I just believe it's a better move for the city for us to do that because we're trying to disseminate all this information to the public and we can do as quickly as possible. And if I have an individual who's very capable to do this quicker than anybody in city hall, it's only intelligent for us to use him to do it even if we gotta pay him an hourly rate to do it, so.
Can, can you let us know what, what an estimate on that's gonna be? Because I remember when we approved this, we approved under the, under the idea that it was gonna be a one-time fee or a yearly fee, not an ongoing monthly fee.
Right.
So now I'm worried about what it's gonna cost the city to have someone upload documents with a scanner when we could do that here ourselves.
Well, I, I agree, and I'll find out from Mr. Drewa what he would do, but the two costs that we did approve was the annual maintenance fee...
Right.
...which is what you referred to, and then the fee to import everything over, which, as I mentioned last month, costs us a little significantly more because we received a lot of pushback from the other companies.
So after everything's uploaded, we'll be doing that ourselves?
We can do that, right. I, just right now, sort of like the mayor has brought up about Mr. Holland still being on that, just, she had a little glitches we need to get taken care of, some of those things we need to maybe not take off the website, repurpose them into a folder.
Mm-hmm.
You know, once we get all that kinda stuff cleaned up and we're working on 2021 stuff right up front, then we'll probably pull it back, pull the reins in a little bit more and let Ms. Hines or one of the other municipal clerks that we have handle that for us at that point, and then use Mr. Drewa to say, like, you know, bench.
Gotcha.
And so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes?
Is the app or the link for the app for the water meters on the new website yet? I don't see it, I haven't got it now.
Mr. Lynn, is it...
No, it is not, and I believe that app, and where's Mr. Higgins, is he still here? If you can help me with that a little bit, they did that personally, I believe.
Uh, we have bailed out some to cement vehicles, we popped some, but as fast as we were changing these out, the ladies were having issues trying to get them uploaded at the, at city hall. So we gave you the app, and he went on there, it may be a few weeks, and he gets me calling, so he's trying to get them all out there and replace before we actually notify everybody that the app is available. If you wanna send us a quick call, hey, has my meter been updated, ladies, they can check it, and then you can log on, download that, it's I on water, E Y E on water. And you'll have to have your account number, so, but if your meter hasn't been updated, it will not let you get in there.
Mine has been.
Okay.
So is that I on water, all lowercase, or is it?
Well, I don't have that in hand, but I, I believe, well, I don't have my phone, because I wanna choose, my, my person, but I believe it's all, all one word, E Y E O N water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
E Y E O N water, one word.
Thank you.
So I'll, there, there's a link. Now that actually, if I put a link on the website, they'll be able to go to the link, is that correct?
Now, that I don't know, he can send it up where they can click on it, and then it will direct them right to it, it should.
All right.
I'm not a computer.
All right, I, I'll, we'll see about, we'll see about getting something up there maybe where the residents can go to the website, there's a thing that they can click on and help them get the app and that kind of thing.
Yes, so one more thing, Mr. Lynn, I understand the filing deadline for candidates is this Friday at 5:00 PM, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and for those in the audience who may not be aware, we have three positions up on the city council, the election will be May first, is that correct, Mr. Lynn?
That is.
And, and they should see you if they're interested in filing as a candidate, is that correct, or is there someone else they should see in city?
That would be kinda being correct, they just come up to the window, ask one of the clerks for a packet, to pick up the packet, and the clerk will give them a packet to pick up, they don't actually need to see me. And then when they're ready and they're done, they just turn it in, and then I'll review it for content and make sure it's okay, and once we're done, then we're done.
Appreciate that. Just wanted to let the public know because the information's not on the website at this time?
No, sir, but we did an asset last council meeting.
That, that would be something I would like to see on the website, election information for...
Yes, sir.
...potential candidates, because this is in, we have a lot of important work to do here in Kennedy, and I like for the voters to have a choice, and I want them to get involved in their town because there's a lot of problems here right now, and we need to fix them, and we need all the help we can get.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn?
Just one, the, the information that the girls gave me upfront for the I on water, is it possible to put that on, for now, Facebook or the website?
I can, I can get that, see if we can get that uploaded to Facebook, yes, ma'am.
That way they can have the information?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lynn, question here, maybe clarification here on water, I've been asked with the billing, how is the late fees working? Are they able to make a payment arrangement if it's been excessively high, or can you still request to go have a meter reread with these new meters? What's going on with the city when that's being requested?
Okay, so where we're at with that is, we've come out of the whole COVID pandemic where we quit doing turnoffs and we quit suspending the late fees. But what we are still doing is, because, see, we went from, we went from about April to well, well into September with not charging late fees, but not requiring a payment because we weren't going to shut offs. So I realize a lot of people have high, high water bills because some people couldn't afford to pay the water bill, they had to choose between water bill and food, and we wanted them choosing food at the time, okay? So we're still making payment arrangements for people, and I've even gone as far with individuals who have kept their payment arrangement with the city, that are falling upon hard times, to re-enter a new payment arrangement with them so that they can stay on a payment arrangement and make it manageable for them. I do draw the line with people who enter into payment arrangements and fail to keep up there in the bar, and I'm not sure I owe them anything at that point, especially commercial businesses. But I am extending things to people. As far as rereads go, it's, you know, if they need a reread, we send someone out. Now, if they have the app, it's just a matter of a push of a button to reread, we don't need to send anyone out for that, that's why we have the new technology. But yes, anybody who's having an issue or anything, you know, we still encourage them to come to city hall, talk to us, see, we're trying to work with as many people as we
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn? Okay, there's no other questions then, thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Okay. Moving on.
Moving on to number eight, consent agenda.
We're not there yet, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, presentation of financials.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please continue.
Thank you.
If you could use the microphone, please.
Okay, so we have... Okay. So we have here, as we have, this month here, we're, we're in, we're about 33% of the way through our year at this point. Okay? And in about two months, we're about six months in, we're going to have a real big thing going on here. We've got to do budget adjustments at the six-month mark. That's, that's just something you do, so you know where you are after six months and where you're going for the rest of the year. But right now, at 33%, what we've got is our general fund and our tax pool account has 4.188 million in it. The hotel motel tax has 2.225 million in it. The water and sewer fund is 853,000 in it. The payday fund has 2.448 million in it, which gives us a total in our tax pool accounts of 9.716 roughly. We have cash in the bank in preparation of 3.04 million. That gives us a total liquidity of right around 12.757 million, which gives us 8.18 months' worth of reserve money. So we could, if we took in no more money today, we could pay our bills for eight months. So we're good. Six months is usually the max you want to see in the municipality. Anything over six months, technically, you're not using the public funds correctly. 90 days is usually the window they recommend. So between 90 days and six months, we're, we're going to find it anyways. So our revenues for the general fund for the last month were 576,000. Our revenues for the water were 648,000. The revenues are still lagging a little bit over the budget, and that's then to how we move the money when we purchase the land. Water revenues are outperforming the budget. And overall, for the monthly revenue, of course, we're, we're slightly underperforming our budget there. The expenditures, we have 558,000 in expenditures, and 478,000 for the water and sewer department. And again, we're, you know, underperforming our budget on expenditures due to the land purchases. And water and sewer is outperforming the budget. And they do a real good job of managing their, their dollars and cents in the water department. So, so we're, we're a little bit out, outperform, underperforming our budget on the expenditures. But again, that's primarily due to land purchases we made, where we had to remove the money. So. Any questions regarding that?
Going back to months of expenses, you say 8.18 months. If memory serves, at one time, it was as high as 18 months. Is that correct?
No, that is. But when you take, when you take millions of dollars out of the reserve funds, it affects that number. If you'll go back to when we first became mayor, and I did this for you and for the new councilors, I hand wrote on there how we calculate that number. Okay? That number is the calculation of all the money that we have in our liquidity, and it's divided by our expenditure budget total. So anytime you take money out of the liquidity section, it's going to over the number of months that you have to work with. So yes, ma'am, you're absolutely correct in asking that question. But I even stated back then, it needed to be around six months.
So same, we're going to flatten the curve. It's not going to continue to slope down to zero months?
We're not going to let it slope down to zero months, because at that point in time, we're misusing city funds.
Okay, that was my question. It is kind of concerning when we go from 18 months to 8.18.
No, it's, like I say, though, when you get over that one threshold, it's not awkward to be using the city funds. And that's just as bad as initially.
Ms. Gadd, we're going to ask a question.
Yes, how much did you save in the checking account, the general operating account?
3.04 million dollars.
Is there a reason that so much is kept there? Do we earn interest on those monies?
It's spread out over several accounts.
Earning interest?
I'm trying to figure out.
Mr. Lynn, can you use the microphone, please?
It's spread out over several accounts, and no, they're non-interest-bearing accounts. Now, you've got to keep in mind one thing about that, that is, that skews that number just slightly, okay? We have a pool of money that we have. And whenever we do the financials, we grab all the cash that we have in the bank, so we can say how much cash we have in the bank. Okay? That pool that we have is what we pay our checks on. So when the checks are coming in, it's constantly hitting that pool and driving that pool number downward. So it's just a depiction at the time of what we have at that point in time. When we get outside that pool, the numbers are much smaller.
So with your investments in tax pool, how often are you able to get them? If you request them today, do those monies come in today? Do they come in in a week?
I could have that money in a matter of an hour if I wanted.
So then why don't we invest more of our money instead of leaving it idle?
Well, it's not that it's left idle. It's, you know.
If it's not earning interest, it's idle.
Yes, but you've got to have money back to pay the bills, to pay the bond payments for the construction.
But you don't pay bills and bond payments daily. You pay payroll.
But it doesn't, it also doesn't prohibit us to make moves and transactions daily, either. That is not the proper way to do it.
Maybe not daily, but weekly or bi-weekly. The money should be invested to get as much on it as possible. Our sales taxes down, our oil and gas roll deeper down?
Actually, we're a nonprofit organization, and what we're supposed to do with the money, if you want to get where the rubber meets the road, is we're supposed to spend the money on roads and sewer infrastructure and things of that nature. We're not really supposed to hold on to. We should be running a zero budget, which means everything we take in, we spend.
But you can't do that in real life, and the monies that are sitting idle till the next payment on the bonds or the next road.
Why, you can't do it in real life. Other municipalities do it?
No, it should be invested.
Well, okay. It is, and we're good.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn? If not, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Next time, please, if you could use the microphone. It's very difficult. The microphone on the iPad is not very sensitive. We had a large number of complaints from people at home that could not hear what was being said during the meeting. And it is a part of the Texas Open Meetings Act, that when you put a meeting online, that it needs to be, the people listening at home need to be able to hear. It's very important. And also, Mr. Lynn, today, I understand that if you do put video from a city council meeting online, you are supposed to also post notice of the meeting 72 hours, no, no less than 72 hours in advance, at the same place where the meeting is posted online. So if you could start doing that in the future, if you could, whoever is managing the Facebook account for the city, if you could start posting notice of the meetings on the Facebook page, no less than 72 hours in advance.
Ms. Attorney, does the law not state that you need to make every reasonable effort to do so? It's not mandatory, so long as you post the agenda in the regularly required place.
It is every reasonable effort to do so, and in the place in which the public is, you know, accustomed to seeing the regularly posted place.
Which in this case, Mr. Mayor, is the box out front in front of City Hall, which is duly posted there. We have met every requirement we are supposed to meet.
I didn't bring a copy of the document with me, Mr. Lynn, but I will provide.
Mr. Mayor, our city attorney is sitting right.
Please don't interrupt me, Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Lynn, if you want, Mr. Mayor, if you want to talk to the city attorney, she's sitting right there. You just heard what she said.
Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Mayor.
Please do not interrupt me.
Why not?
Who is the presiding officer of this meeting?
So what? Kick me out.
Okay.
Chief Ash.
Can I make a motion that we go into an executive closed session, please?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
One moment, please. One moment, please. Say it again, James.
I don't need to word it a certain way.
I'll go ahead and, you do need to, James, you need to list the section of the Open Meetings Act that allows us to go into a closed session, so.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, James. I'll go ahead. Okay. I make a motion that the city county, the city council goes into executive session in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, along with Section 551.074, and other matters that obtain to those two codes.
And I'll second that motion.
Ms. Gadd, is that proper, the way we, thank you, appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you will call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All voted in favor. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, you are welcome to keep your seats, or you're welcome to leave. We're going to go into closed session in the old council chambers, where we used to hold council meetings. Thank you. For those who do decide to leave, thank you for coming tonight. At this time, we are going into closed session, and the time is 7 o'clock, and the date is February 9th, 2021. It's 8:38 PM, and we are reconvening into open session after our closed session. Before we continue with the agenda for tonight's meeting, I have a statement that I want to, I just want to let everyone know that after the closed session, it came clear to me that I raised my voice in an inappropriate way, and for that, I apologize. To Mr. Lynn, to the council members, to the audience that are here tonight, and everyone who's watching online. Sometimes our emotions get the best of us, and I think they did tonight. I was trying to regain control of a meeting that felt like it was slipping away from me, and apparently I spoke louder than I thought I was speaking. So for that, I apologize. I care deeply for this community. It's because of that, when I see things happening that I feel like could cause harm to the people who live here, it affects me on a very deep emotional level. And sometimes that's our vulnerability. But my job as a mayor is to be professional, and courteous, and respectful, and I'm going to continue to try to do that to the best of my ability. So to all of you, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Mr. Lynn.
Counsel, mayor, Kennedy residents, I apologize for the unprofessional way I conducted myself during the banter with the mayor regarding the agenda being placed where it should have been. I should not have misspoken in the tone that I did towards the mayor. I realize how I acted unprofessional in that manner, and how it misrepresented the city of Kennedy and the fine folks here. It did not present very good to anybody, and I certainly do apologize to each and every one of you. And mayor, I certainly do apologize directly to you for overstepping you during that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. I appreciate that. So if we continue with business, we still have plenty of business ahead of us tonight. It's already been a very long meeting. If we can continue on to where we left off, I believe we were at?
Number nine.
Number eight?
Number eight.
Number eight, Consent Agenda, yes. Number eight, Consent Agenda. The section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated by a single motion, second, and affirmation majority vote. Items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, city council minutes. Item B, approved financials. I will entertain a motion to discuss this item?
I'll make a motion that we, actually, I'm going to make a motion that we approve both of those items. We've already discussed them. They've already, the finance has already been presented, and the minutes were in our packet. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve both, and.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is number nine. Under Ordinance Resolution, Other Action Items, the section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Item nine, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Resolution 21-01, a resolution confirming support to the Karnes Community Affordable Housing LP with regards to its Oasis Springs development located at 116 Stewart Street, Kennedy, Texas, 78119, pertaining to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs 2021 Competitive Housing Tax Credits Application for Construction and Renovation of Affordable Rental Housing in the City of Kennedy. The presenter on this item is Ms. Kristy Legendes. If you could use the microphone.
I can use the microphone.
Thank you.
Although I think you hear the class more than anything else. My phone is not mistaken.
I hope we can get a stand that's attached to the podium. That would make things a lot easier on folks, I think.
Look, it covers, too.
Yeah, no doubt. And I can project pretty well, too, so not a problem. I'm back again. Thank you for me to present to you this resolution for approval. We, we can proceed without city approval, but we won't get the tax credits without city approval, I'll be very honest. So it's super important to the housing authority and to the residents of the housing authority to gain the city's support. We, we have the resolution. We have also the questions and answers that we presented to the residents. We did have two different resident meetings to discuss the conversion, to discuss rehabilitation or rebuilding the units. As I said last month, or, yeah, last month, our units, they were built in the 50s. Our infrastructure is failing. And I think the best use of our tax dollars and our money going forward is definitely to rebuild the housing stock that we have, make something that does not look like, you know, when you drive by and you go, yep, that's the housing authority. So it is our goal to, to build housing that people can be proud to live in, that is functional and energy efficient. And if you guys have any questions, I would be more than happy to talk your ears off about HUD if you would like.
I read through the information in the packet that you presented to us. It's very detailed, and I really do appreciate that. Really helped us get a deep understanding of what, what's happening. So are there any questions from the council at this time?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and make a motion considering, go ahead and take action in passing regard to Resolution 2101, a resolution confirming to support the Karnes County, Karnes Community Affordable Housing with regards to its Oasis Springs development located at 116 Stewart Street, Kennedy, Texas, 78119, pertaining to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs 2021 Competitive Housing Tax Credits Application for Construction and Renovation of Affordable Rental Housing in the City of Kennedy.
I'll second.
Just to clarify, this is to approve the resolution, correct?
To approve it.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you could call the roll, please?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion?
Okay, somebody has to say something about how cool the name Oasis Springs. We put a lot of thought into that. So we're like, Kennedy.
I like it.
Yeah.
Is that what it's going to be now, or is that what it will be?
It will be called the Oasis Springs Apartments, yeah. No longer Kentex.
Any further discussion or questions?
No.
If not, then, Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good, and thank you for your patience. Next item on our agenda is item number 10, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Awarding the East Main Drainage and Plating Project to Dirt Boys Incorporated for the not-to-exceed bid amount of $1,360,213.58 to be completed not later than 150 calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed. Directing and authorize the mayor to sign and effect the contract between the City of Kennedy and Dirt Boys Incorporated. And we have a presenter this evening, Mr. Steve Sinovitz and Martin McDonald.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is the mic on, Mr.?
It's on. Is the red light flashing?
It's solid.
The red light's solid. It's on.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Yes, sir.
I'm very excited tonight to be able to present on the bid results for the East Main Drainage Project. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. At 2:00 PM on Monday, February 1st of 2021, bids for the East Main Project rebid were opened in the city council chambers at Kennedy City Hall. There were two bidders, Tierra Lease Service LLC out of Karnes City, Texas, and Dirt Boys Incorporated out of San Antonio, Texas. Dirt Boys Incorporated included a subcontractor, Elite Curb and Concrete LLC out of Rockdale, Texas. Dirt Boys bid $1,360,213.58, and they selected the 150 calendar days absolute schedule option. Tierra Lease Service LLC bid $1,402,000. Tierra Lease Service LLC bid $1,402,235, and they selected the 12-week-with-possible-extension schedule option. This was a best value selection process. As described in Section 002113 of the bid documents, the bids were scored using the following five criteria: experience in constructing concrete pavement contraction design, or CPCD; price, the lowest bid scored at 25 points; all other bids scored as a ratio of the lowest bid divided by the other bid times 25; ability to meet construction schedules including present commitments, financial stability, and contractor's safety program. The, the committee scored the following. For the concrete pavement contraction design, Dirt Boys scored 30 points out of 30. Tierra scored 1.5 average, this is the average of all the committee members. Price, Dirt Boys got 25 because they were the low, the low bidder. Tierra Lease, the ratio, they, they scored 24.25 points. For schedule, Dirt Boys scored an average of 18.75, and Tierra Lease Service four. Financial, Dirt Boys 15, Tierra Lease Service 1.5. And safety program, Dirt Boys 9.5, and Tierra Lease 1.75. The total was 98.25 for Dirt Boys, 33 for Tierra Lease. Our findings upon reviewing the bid submission of Dirt Boys, their subcontractor, Elite Curb and Concrete, carries an impressive display of concrete experience. Dirt Boys claims to have an impressive history of staying on schedule and within budget. They provided us adequate financial statements and an excellent contractor's safety program and safety history records. Their total price bid is the lower of the two. Our findings upon reviewing the bid submission of Tierra Lease Service, although they do show experience of working with Tech dot on paving and drainage projects, they did not specifically reference any concrete paving experience. They did not give us company data on the ability to meet schedules, financial stability, and contractor's safety program. Their total bid price is the higher of the two. Therefore, since Dirt Boys Incorporated has the higher best value score, it is our opinion that it would be in the best interest of the City of Kennedy to enter into a contract with Dirt Boys Incorporated of San Antonio, Texas, with Elite Curb and Concrete LLC as their subcontractor for $1,360,213.58 with a 150-day calendar day absolute construction schedule. And I'll entertain any questions about the project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Sinovitz?
Yes, sir.
Would you please explain to the council, the mayor, and the residents of Kennedy this 12-week construction versus this 150-day absolute, what that actually means to them?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So this contract was set up with two options that the contractors, the bidders could check when they turn in their bid. One was 12 weeks. But knowing that if things came along such as supplier problems, even COVID issues with labor, weather delays, unknowns that come up during construction, that the city would be very flexible with allowing for change orders to extend those calendar days. 12 weeks is a pretty aggressive schedule, but knowing that, okay, if something comes up, they would have the flexibility of being able to ask for a change order for time extensions. The 150 calendar day absolute schedule option is just that. 150 days, absolute. There are no reasons, there are no excuses, there are no, no outstanding circumstances. The contractor is totally at risk if something happens. He says 150 days. If it passes 150 days, it goes into liquidated damages. And so then he pays money every day that he's behind 150 days. So Dirt Boys selected the 150 calendar day absolute schedule option.
Does that clarify?
This is a different type of, the, the project that they're going to be doing because of, because of the street having no other, it's only has one ingress and egress. So is that going to be a problem for them, you know? And what I don't want is for the citizens to start calling down here to City Hall and, hey, I can't get to my house. You know what I'm saying?
Very good question. We put in the plans a traffic phasing plan, and the contractors have to submit a traffic control plan, and there are several different criteria with that. One, they have to allow for pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic during the initial phases of construction. What they're going to do is they're going to go out there, you know, and take out the asphalt and base material and put down a geotextile fabric, and then six inches of aggregate base, limestone base. And that, then, they need to be able to make that. At the end of the day, they have to be able to drive in and out of people's houses. There will be one way on one side of the street that's always left open while they're constructing the other half of the street. The last part, past Waverly, is a dead end. So that's a little more challenging, but there'll still be one side for people to, to get in and out on one half of the street. They have to provide temporary parking areas nearby the, the residents, especially during the concrete operation. So when they're building half the street out of con, it's going to be a concrete street, they're going to have to form that side of the street. They're going to have to pour the concrete, and they're going to have to wait for the concrete to cure. And we have given them five days after they start the form work to have the ability to drive a pedestrian, I'm not, I'm sorry, a passenger vehicle on the concrete. Typically, you'll see about 28 days for a compressive strength of a concrete to attain its strength, but there are ways you can accelerate that. There's a thing called early, early high-strength concrete. I've seen compression tests done within a week and, and them getting 6,000 PSI. This, this is a 4,000 pounds per square inch compression concrete. It's very strong. So they have five days after they start forming, because that's going to block off the driveways. So a resident would be able to, say, park in the temporary parking area within a few hundred feet of their house. They have to be able to have pedestrian access, but then there's five days for the concrete to cure strong enough to put a passenger vehicle on that. The contractor also has to maintain emergency access down the half of the street. They have to maintain garbage service. And even if, I've, I've been told that some contractors will even take the people's garbage cans to a local spot that's accessible to the garbage truck and then haul them back for the people in the area that's being worked on. They have to maintain mail service. They're going to put in temporary buckets with concrete, and the mailboxes will be on one side of the streets so that the people can get their mail service. So all of that is in the traffic phasing plan, and we will review the contractor's traffic control plan to make sure they're complying with that. Also, there's, you can get through the first two blocks from Laredo to Mourning and from Mourning to Waverly. There is some ingress and egress out back through Golf Street, which is the next street over the west. So they'll be able to have some kind of a circulation pattern that leads to let residents come down the one-way street and then back out, so.
And also taking consideration the deliveries to our sewer plant, because that's down there, too.
Yes, sir. There's a gate off of Golf and Waverly that the city's wastewater department uses. They do have other gates, so I would, contractor needs to coordinate with the public works department and the wastewater plant to make sure that they provide ingress and, and egress through one of the gates while they're doing that intersection.
Any other questions? There are no further questions, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll go ahead and take action on awarding the East Main Drainage and Paving Project to Dirt Boys Incorporated for the not-to-exceed bid amount of $1,360,213.58 to be completed not later than 150 calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed, directing and authorizing the mayor to sign and effect the contract between the City of Kennedy and Dirt Boys Incorporated.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
More discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? There being no further?
Yeah, let me ask a real question. Let's see, see, once this gets awarded, what is the timeframe, you look at them starting at?
Typically, you have to get bonds in place and insurance and a, and a contract signed, and then typically, it's about a two-week process. I think a reasonable notice to proceed would be early March.
Early March, start, got you. Any further discussion? There you go. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All voted in favor, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11. Consideration and Possible Action in Regard to Ordinance Twenty-One dash oh-three, annexing 12.6 acres plus minus of the Escondido Creek Parkway at the request of the San Antonio River Authority, SARAH, into the City of Kennedy and moving the City of Kennedy's municipal borders to encompass the entirety of 12.6 acres plus or minus. Can I get a motion to discuss this item?
I'll make a motion that we discuss item number 11.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation on this?
I gave you my agenda.
Oh, sorry. Do you need it back?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
All right. So, I gotta get my thing. Anyway, all right, so we all know we have Escondido Parkway, and the city already owns a portion of that, and that's the portion that's out by Fifth Street, okay? So we got that, but the rest of the park was not in the city limits. And what brings this about is the safety of the people using the park. We were asked by SARAH to provide police protection, but we can't do that if it's not within the city limits or unless we get an interlocal agreement with the county. Chief Ash went to the county and asked them for an interlocal agreement if they would agree to let us patrol the area since we're just right there. Rather than if something happened, have to wait for a deputy to come from whatever part of Karnes County. The sheriff respectfully declined to enter into an agreement with us to provide police protection and patrolling of the park. So SARAH has requested to come into the city and be part of the City of Kennedy, which will then enable our police department to patrol that entire park and protect the people that are out there.
You say respectfully declined. What was, what was the reasons? Why would you decline?
They just said no. So I was being nice by saying respectfully.
Okay.
So that's, that's why this is here. It's for the city council to agree or not agree, to bring them into the city, and we'll be providing all the police protection out there from that point.
Perfect. And there, there are no residents that live within those 12.6?
There are no residents, right. No, nobody is affected with the residents on this. So this is just the land in that area. Any other questions?
Any further questions for Mr. Lynn? Any further discussion? There being no further questions or discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take action on Ordinance Twenty-One dash oh-three, annexing 12.6 acres plus and minus of the Escondido Creek Parkway at the request of the San Antonio River Authority into the City of Kennedy and moving the City of Kennedy municipal borders to encompass the entirety of the 12.6 acres.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor, motion carries. Item number 12. Consideration and Possible Action on Appointing Ms. Debbie Mead to the Kennedy Public Library Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning February 10th, 2021, and ending February 9th, 2024. Mr. Lynn, I'm sorry, can I get a motion to discuss the item?
I'll make a motion to discuss item number 12.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Okay, so the, the library board has to add numbers to its board, and they had Mr. Franklin Knopf. His term expired December 31st of 2020, and so they wanted to bring Ms. Debbie Mead to the council for approval to replace Mr. Knopf.
Knok.
Knok.
Thank you for correcting my note. Mr. Knok, I'm sorry for saying that. That's all we're going to do for this. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lynn? Any further discussion on this item? Just no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion at this point.
Make a motion considering possible, I'll make a motion to, go ahead, set Ms. Debbie Mead to the Kennedy Public Library Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning February 10th, 2021, and ending February 9th, 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll?
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Item number 13. Consideration and Possible Action in Regard to the Ongoing Billing Dispute between the City of Kennedy and Pecan Grove RV Park. Presenters on this item are myself, Mayor Baker, and Mr. David Brodsky. Mr. Brodsky, if you could come forward to the podium? Thank you, sir. And if you could please use the microphone so the folks at home can hear. Thank you. Before you speak, Mr. Brodsky, I just want to let the council know that he came to me with this concern a while back, and I, I felt the fair thing to do was give him the opportunity as an agenda item, to speak to the city council and ask any questions that he may need to ask or get any information that we need to get, to get this put behind us. This has been an ongoing thing, and so I wanted to give him his chance to tell the side of the sto, his side of the story. We've heard Mr. Lynn's side of the story. I just thought it would be fair for the council to hear from Mr. Brodsky. So, Mr. Brodsky, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I actually haven't heard Mr. Lynn's side of the story, but I've tried to get that. I've actually made requests for Open Records Act on the, the audit that was done in 2018 on the water billing system. And I've actually had multiple people, including Sonic, Star, Star Lodge, myself, multiple residents have complained about the water billing system, whether it be broken meters, calculation problems, or outdated software. There is a problem. And I brought this to the attention of the council a year ago, and my meters weren't changed out after it was agreed that they would be changed out. I received a $3,000 credit in some sort, which after talking to Mr. Nguyen, he explained to me that that was some sort of courtesy, which I'm not sure if that was a courtesy or if it was for reimbursement or for what it was, but for Mr. Nguyen, it was a courtesy. And so I don't know if the city gives out courtesy money, but if it was, thank you. But I still have the problem, same meters, the same, the same, the same issue with them irregular readings on the meters. Also, since that's happened, I've tried to have a discussion with Mr. Lynn about it, and Mr. Lynn's demeanor wasn't the greatest about it. Many, many other people in the city are having issues with Mr. Lynn's demeanor. I think this professionalism and being a city manager, your demeanor could be different. People are being told that their water issues by the, by the water department are leaks, and many of these people have had their water checked by plumbers and found that they've had no leaks. It's an ongoing problem, and it's been going on for quite a while. This particular set of billing that I've got, got in was prior to any kind of changes done to my, my meters, which some have been done. One, one meter was recently put in, thankfully. But I literally had to shut my business down. I didn't have to shut it down. I did it just because I'm not going to sit here and continue to pay water on broken meters. Right now, I've got three meters on the property. The two on the outside are completely shut off, but they're The two on the outside are completely shut off, but they're still, if I go over and turn on my water, they're shut off by the city, but if I go over and turn on my water, there's still dripping coming out of my meters. Okay, so that could be running my water bill up. There shouldn't be any dripping coming out of my meters. That should show that there's a valve problem or some sort of problem, not professional in the water meter industry, but there's an issue. It's an ongoing issue. It's been all over town. I'm sure it's something that's been going on far before Mr. Lynn got here, you know, and know that it's something he's trying to address and fix, and I know they're trying to, y'all are trying to put new meters in for everybody. My issue is, my particular issue is, is that, again, I can show where the inconsistencies are. It's not just the water, but it's the sewer. So if there's an overreading on the water or the water reading isn't, you're overbuild on the water, you're also being overbuild on the sewer because they give you a sewer rate based off your water rate. So, it's an issue all the way around for not just me, but other people like Sonic, Star, multiple residents, and these people, if they're being overbuilt, especially people that are on small budgets and income, $1,000 a month, social security incomes, and they're getting a $1,000 water bill or $400 water bill, and then they're being put on payment plans to pay for something that they don't owe. And if they don't pay it, they gotta make a choice between food or water. That's not right. It's not right for the people of the city, and it's especially not right for them to be being told that they have water leaks or there's no transparency about what's going on, or, you know. I think that it could be handled in a better fashion, and as far as my particular bill goes, again, like I say, my bill, I've got three meters, each supplied the same amount of RVs, and during COVID, I didn't have any RVs in there. The whole field shut down, so my place was pretty much shut down anyway. So my water bill's being outrageous on one side of the park and zero actually even reading on the outside of the park when I know I have water usage. It's not just bad for me, it's bad for the city. There's definitely a problem because when I got a zero usage on one meter and 176,000 gallons on another one and 4,600 gallons on another one, it's just, it's so inconsistent that it's not possible. And, you know, I check daily, the way my RVs are built, there can't be a toilet tank leak because these are, I don't know if any of you are familiar with how RVs work, but you step on a puddle and it feeds the water into the RV, and that's the amount of water that you get, okay? So there's no tank, no holding tank or nothing like that. So, we check daily because of this issue. We check daily to make sure there's no water leaks, and basically, I'm asking that, what I think is a good, what I'm recommending is for myself and others, that if they have this issue with the water overbilling, that the city take into consideration that they go back and average out their usage for a year or six months, and then these folks that are having these issues with the bills being extremely high like that, average their bills out, but putting them on a payment plan that they can't afford, you know, for water that they're not using, I don't think that's fair to citizens of Kennedy. And for them to be being told that it is a water leak when it's not, that's just outright being lied to, you know? And if the employees are being instructed to sit there and lie to the people of the city, that's not very transparent, and it's not good for the city, I don't think. It's not good for businesses to be closed down either because of it, you know? So, I'm asking that my bill be averaged out. I've asked for a profile on multiple occasions. I haven't been able to get one. I've asked for a copy of the audit that was done in 2018. Haven't had no response on that. I've asked for some other things on Open Records Act. I haven't had any response whatsoever on that. I don't know, I haven't heard from Mr. Lynn about what's going on with his side of any story. The last time I tried to talk to him, I basically had the police called on me. So, you know, I know you ran on transparency, Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what's fair to the people of Kennedy. If we're replacing all the meters and there is a water meter issue, let the people of Kennedy know there's a water meter issue or a calculation issue or an outdated software problem. Let them know it. People are understandable, you know? They understand. You're fixing it, you're doing the best you can do. Average your bills out. I don't think that's too much to ask if these folks are getting hit with high, high bills like this, and myself. Average them out, you know, until the problem is fixed. That's what I'm asking.
And average based on prior usage.
Right. Especially if they can show up with a letter from a licensed plumber stating that they don't have a leak, which I think would be a good criteria to use in situations like this. I mean, you have that as a criteria. You can say, bring me in a letter from a licensed plumber that says you don't have a leak, and we'll average your bill out.
Mr. Lynn, is there a problem with taking that approach?
Well, yes, to some degree, as far as having a plumber come in with a letter saying they don't have a leak. There's always other things that could happen. It's a proven fact in the plumbing industry that toilet stoppers will cause your water bill to escalate very rapidly, okay? And they're so infrequent because sometimes little Johnny flushes the toilet, and the toilet stopper stays up and it drains the water, and then somebody comes by, a little Johnny flushes it again, and it goes down, so everything's good, and, you know, it just happens. It's cyclical at times, okay? So for a plumber just to go on the property and say there's no leak, here, average my bill, I don't think that would be doing complete prudence and everything. However, what I will say that we do at City Hall is we've been real good about it. If, say, Mr. Brodsky, since you're here, I'm going to use you as an example, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if Mr. Brodsky had a leak on his property and his water bill was $20,000 in one month, and he came in and said, hey, guys, here's my plumber's bill showing that he fixed my leak in that, well, we would take it all the way back down to his normal usage. Whatever he was charged, we would more or less just issue a credit for to do that, and then we would figure out over the course of the last six months or a year what his average usage was, and that's what we would charge him as a monthly bill. So, we do do that with the city already for people that do have leaks and get them fixed and show us that they did have them fixed. And as far as the payment plans go, I mean, it's the same payment plan that was preexisting before I walked through the doors in the City of Kennedy. I've changed absolutely nothing with the payment plan. So whatever they were doing, they're still continuing to do. Now, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Brodsky on one point. As a matter of fact, I think it's a commonality that he and I both have, though he doesn't know it yet. I think that, and it's something that we, as an administration and a governing body, need to address. I think having sewer rates that are variable is a disservice to the community. I think we need to have a static sewer rate and that, so that if you do have a water leak, you're still not getting penalized on the sewer end of it, okay? It's more easy for a homeowner to say, okay, hey, wait a minute. My water bill was 300 this month, and it's normally only 85. What's going on? But my sewer bill still stays, say, 35, 40 bucks for the month, whatever it is, okay? When you have that kind of escalation, you have a $300 water bill and $110 sewer bills, and now you got a $400 bill that has to be addressed. So I do agree that we do need to take this up at some point about going to a static sewer rate versus a variable sewer rate. So, I do agree with that. We did change out one of Mr. Brodsky's meters recently, and I do have some data. I had his meter tested. If the council and Mr. Brodsky so desires, I can pass out the test results of your meter.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
If I might add, from what I understand here of recently, it's not even a meter issue, it's a calculation problem. So, I'm not even sure of the meters or what the problem is here.
Maybe related to the software, the billing software?
Related to the software, yeah.
Thank you.
I have one answer.
Is this just on that one meter?
So typically, it's on that one meter that we yanked out and we replaced it with the three-inch meter. So typically, if a resident has a problem with their meter, one of the options that they have that they can do for the City of Kennedy is they can call us up, say, hey, I have my meter tested. The caveat to that is this, we'll test your meter, and if it's proven faulty, then that's on us, we'll deal with it, and we'll take care of things. But if it's proven accurate, then it's on you to pay us for doing it. So when we changed out Mr. Brodsky's meter, I had them test this meter at the city's expense. I wanted to know for sure, was there a meter issue or not? So in any resolution, you've got to start with something, and that's what I'm starting with is the meter because, you know. So what we have with the meter is the, and I would be willing, I'd be lying if I, you know, didn't say this, Mr. Higgins is probably the more capable person to explain it than I am. I can read it, I know what it says, but, Mr. Higgins, would you mind deciphering this for them so they can hear it in terms that you can deal? Because I'm not going to lie here, guys, I did not bring my glasses tonight, and that print is pretty small.
When meters are tested, they're tested by an approved meter testing facility, and they're tested usually for 10 gallons or 100 gallons. In this case, it was tested on 100 gallons at low flow, medium flow, and high flow. And you can see by the test results in all three of those areas, it tested well within means on low flow. Let me go back and so I don't get ahead of myself here. 98.5% to 101.5% is the range of accuracy. The meter was submitted, tested at 98.6 for the low flow at a rate of 3/4 gallons per minute. So it was registered slow on low flow. An intermediate flow tested at 100.1%, almost perfect at four gallons per minute, and the maximum flow rate tested at 99.1%, which is talked to customers as benefit, it tested slow at 40 gallons per minute. So you can see, even though this meter was tested and registered and is well within the accuracy that it's supposed to be for the billing purposes and calculations.
So, Mr. Higgins, when you say it's testing slow, what does that really mean?
When it tests slow, it means the city's getting ripped off. I mean, I'm just putting it in my terms.
It's measuring less water than what's actually flowing through it?
Exactly. Yes.
So, my question is, if it's not working properly, it's not working properly, whether it's the city's side or my side, is it consistent? Is it inconsistent?
It's consistent being based on the 100-gallon test.
Based on the 100-gallon test?
Based on the 100-gallon.
On 176,000 gallons of water, would it be consistent, or can you say that?
Most likely, it would. Can I guarantee that? No, sir, I can't. But what month did you get billed 176,000 gallons and was it on this meter?
Well, I've got multiple months, and actually, there's months that I got zero usage by the city.
Just a month of 176,000. What cycle was that?
I've got multiple months here. Here's one month. What meter number is that?
Last three digits is 995.
Well, my bill doesn't actually show that, I don't think. But I had a meter reading in January 31, 2020, one meter putting out 15,700 gallons of water.
Well, I can't go back to 2020. That's over here.
I'll explain what I had going on here, but.
What month did you say?
This one's got 100, January, I got 153,500 gallons of water.
January of 2021?
2020.
Okay.
Okay. 153 gallons, 1,500 gallons. My other two meters, one of them was 15,700 gallons, and one was 45,300 gallons, and these are all, they're inconsistent, and I have the same amount of RVs on all three meters.
But what are we talking about now? I mean, more.
The bill that I'm arguing about is not now. It's the bill that's from January through.
2020.
Of 2020?
A year ago? Over a year ago?
No, we're just now in 2021.
Right. We're 2021.
So I'm talking about all of last years.
January 2020.
I'm going through all of last year's bills. I've got January, February, but if you look at February, you hear January, you've got one meter showing 15,700 per use, the next meter showing 45,000, and the next meter showing 153,200 gallons. The next month, I'm showing 6,300 gallons of usage, 4,700 gallons of usage, and 5,900 gallons of usage. Can you see the inconsistencies? Do you want to bring them up there so you can see them?
If you understand.
Okay? Okay. This is a level. Here, I've got one meter showing that usage, one meter showing that usage, and one meter showing that usage. The very next month, no leaks repaired or anything like that, this is what I got for usage. How does it go from that to that? And then your next month? Yeah, then your next month, you're looking at 13,000, 13,000, 16,000. Oh, wait. 8,400 use, 4,900 use, and then 14,000 gallons, okay? So we got just, it's just all over the board. And I had gotten, this says credit on here, I don't know why that says it on there, my bookkeeper put that on there, but I had gotten some credit back.
Does that have the credits you got back to them?
No, 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 no. This is the usage consumption, see? So, you know, it's just all over the board, so I don't know if it's a calculation problem, a meter problem, or what the problem is, but there's a problem, you know? And I got the rest of the bills throughout, and it's, let me show you some. Last year, we did this. Here, this is kind of a normal bill, but still even, you know, 13,000, 19,000, those are pretty consistent, then 38,000. Somewhat normal, but we start getting into 150,000s or 50,000 gallons with the usage, and then 50,000, and then I'm getting billed. Here, here you go. This is really good. In June, about zero usage on one meter, 112,000 gallons of usage, and 38,000 gallons of usage. How do we do that? We got a problem. Houston, there's a problem, okay? I got a credit back last year, my business, I didn't have to shut down, I did because I'm just tired, you know? This could be resolved easily. These problems can be resolved very easily. These problems can be resolved very easily, not just for me, but a lot of citizens of this town, of this town. Just average them out until you get the meters fixed. There's water loss, apparently there's water loss, you got a lot of loss somewhere, so it's going somewhere, right?
I know, I know one thing, Mr. Lynn, what, what was the amount of usage that y'all mentioned before? That if, if a, if a meter hits a certain amount, y'all were going to look at it more specifically? I can't remember what the.
Well, what I, well, what it was, counselor, was because of some of the concerns of the council and the residents in, in Kennedy, okay? One of the things I did do recently was I went back to the clerks who do these bills. And I said, okay, guys, we got to do a better job of looking at these bills before they get to the, into the consumer's hands. And I said, any zero reads that is a 100% definite, it doesn't get mailed out, okay? We look at that, and we drill down on that, and we ask questions, why is it a zero read? Okay? Then it was, if it was $80, more than $80, because the typical bill in Kennedy is around $52 for a resident, okay? When you consider sewer net. So we had an $80 threshold that any bill over $80, again, got refined. It didn't go out. So when they, they are now having to, they're having to actually go through these bills hand by hand, as they're getting them and look at them and say, okay, this one gets re-looked at, this one gets re-looked at, this one. And this is something that I just recently implemented, and I have seen the results and the benefits, and so have the ladies as well. The number of people calling and complaining has begun to decline because we're doing this. Also, it helps the ladies to better identify what's going on with the bill. So if it goes out that it's $80, and you normally have a $40 bill, we've done more than our due diligence to make sure that it is an $80 bill. And so when they call, they're more capable to handle these questions, say, you know, we've researched on that. Now, I will say, Mr. Brodsky is correct, but what he said is not specific to Kennedy, Texas. In every municipality you go to, and I will swear to this because I'm going to tell you, y'all, the residents in this town think they have it tough. Where I came from, is, is, they wouldn't be able to handle it. That's the first, that's the first thing that comes out of their mouth. You pick up the phone, you say, hey, why is my water bill $400 this month? Just water alone. And they're like, well, you have a leak. Well, no, I don't. Well, yeah, you do. Go check your meter. And that's what they tell you. They tell you to go check your meter. Go out there, pull the cover off, see if the little thing's spinning. You got a leak. You know, and it's just like, okay, but let me not pay that $400, leak or no leak. I guarantee you, City of Dennis, a person pulls up in front of my house, shuts my water off. Not six months later, 15 days after the due date. And I don't get that water turned back on until I pay the $400 plus the deposit, plus the disconnection fee, plus the reconnection fee. So my $400 bill now costs me $700, $800. Okay? So what we're doing here in Kennedy is way more than most municipalities do. Another step that we took, and Mr. Brodsky alluded to it, and so did Mr. Sutton earlier, is that we did spend the money to upgrade the technology in the city. So whatever due diligence we could do, we are doing. The great thing about this new technology is that it's kind of like a Mendoza line in the sand, that everything before that Mendoza line on this side is the past, and everybody starts off together at zero going this way. Now, does that help people that may or may not have had issues in the past? It does going forward, it doesn't historically. What does it do for the city of Kennedy? It now gives me an opportunity as the city manager to say, okay, we've got everybody going forward right. Now I can take time and go backwards and say, what about this issue? What about that issue? It's not so pressing to say, okay, you know, we got bills going out this month, and this is still, you know, we're, we're able to isolate things down. See? A case in point, Mr. Brodsky, okay? So before I came to council meeting tonight, okay, we changed that as meter, and we changed it out one inch to one inch. And we had a reading in there, and then we were looking at this reading, and one of the clerks came to me and said, Mr. Lynn, I believe this reading is wrong. I think I hit one button too many. And so go look at it. She goes and looks at it, and sure enough, she put a zero in between two numbers. Okay? So the number, instead of being 47, was 407. It was just a simple typo. But because we've instituted this new policies, they caught this right away. But you can imagine, you know, the question is, what do I do? Well, it's real simple. Change it to the right number and fix his bill. I mean, that's all you got to do. I mean, just fix the man's bill and make it right, you know? And, and they did. So these are the kind of things we're seeing more in City Hall that I didn't see in the first, we'll say, eight and a half months of being here with these water issues. Now I'm starting to see more of this stuff getting resolved before it gets to the consumer.
So here's my main question. I love that we're doing all these things now. I would like to see a resolution of some type for Mr. Brodsky, because this is, I mean, I'm just going to say, this poor guy, this has been an ongoing issue. I'm not a water guy. I don't know if it's the billing, I don't know if it's the, the meter, but clearly we need a resolution. So what can we do to fix this for him so that we can?
Not just for me, what he's talking about is, is good, and what he's doing is great. That's perfect. Okay? They're addressing the water problem. That's good. But there's a whole bunch of people that have had past water problems that are on bill, on payment plans. I don't care about me, I can pay my water bill. Okay? And I'm only here today because of them. They're asking me on Facebook and everywhere else, please come to the city council and step up and say something. I don't know why, they're asking me to do it. I've been unofficially elected. So I'm here. That's what I'm doing. I'm trying to speak for them, too. These people who got $1,000 on social security check and get a $500 bill, you got to go back, you know? You say you're going forward, but you're going to have to go back and undo some of these overbilling or typos or whatever. As I asked Mr. Lynn, what are all these zeros in my bill? He said, I don't know. What'd you tell me? I don't know?
I don't know. I still don't know.
He didn't know. He still don't know. Why do I have some of these zeros? He don't know. Nobody knows what's going on. And so we've got a lot of people, I've got more than 100 people that have hit me up on Facebook that are angry, you know? And, and I want to be able to come to Mr. Lynn and talk to you in a cordial way where there's no, you know, bad demeanor between us, you know? It's for the city of Kennedy. That's what we're all here for, for the residents, for the people of Kennedy. And you're new here, you're not from our community, and I understand you're frustrated. There's a lot of crap that's been going on in this city for many, many years, and you're having to come in here and mop it up. I know it's a tough job. You get off a lot, you know? But the demeanor, that, that's got to stop, you know? We're a small town, everybody talks, everybody knows, you're not getting a very good rep around town. And I don't know if you look at Facebook much, and they're not talking good about you. They want you gone, you know? And so, you know, let's do this together, for not just me, but for the people. I don't care, you know? I've shut my place down anyway right now. And some of these bills are just pathetic, because since COVID started, oil, the oil people moved out. And I sold, if you notice, when you drive by there, I sold out most of my RVs. I owned all the RVs. And I sold most of them off, and I'll probably put something else in there. And I've got other things that I'm bringing into the city, you know, that I want to bring into the city. Businesses, major, major businesses, properties that I have, you know? I've done a lot for Yorktown, and I, and I can do a lot for Kennedy, you know? I just want to make sure I'm doing things right, and everybody else is doing things correct and proper, you know? So yes, I am asking for my bill to be adjusted, my bill, but not so much my bill, but for the rest of these folks who are on these payment plans that are just trying to figure out how they're going to buy dinner or pay their water bill, you know? That's, that's around there. There should be a resolution and resolve that.
Mr. Lynn, when, I, I used to read meters by hand back in the, back in the old days, when I started with the city of Kennedy. And we used to have a little black columnar book for each month. And when we got to, when the meter starts at 0000, you know, it starts climbing, right? Because you're reading from the right to the left. And when that meter gets over 100,000 or a million, it zeroes out again. My question is, does that computer, and see, what I used to have to do, because when I was taught math, we would use, we'd put an extra number over to the, to get the equation, the proper equation. If we didn't do that, it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to match with, like, the average, like Mr. Brodsky said. My question is, when a meter gets to that point, and now we're using radio read, does the computer add the proper zero, or does it add too many zeros? And that's where a bill goes up like that?
Well, what I would have to say in that aspect is, and you're going to love me when I say this. Are you ready? At least I know he's going to love me when I say this. The biggest system that I worked with was RVS. And I did just exactly like you as a city manager. I grabbed the book, I went out in the community, I read the meters by hand, I had to write them in the book, and when it zeroed out, I had to add the one over there, so I know what you're talking about.
When you ran out of them, yes, because you're in another bracket.
And then whenever we would enter them into RVS, we would enter it into where it came out right, okay? This Badger system is new to me personally, okay? I've never worked with Badger before. And with us having the transition that we're having, again, going back to my prior statement, it's best to move forward with this and get this done, to give me time to go look at the Badger system and dive into it to see if there were any fallacies in there. Because whenever I begin to do stuff like that, it's going to take time, because I'm going to have to go through it and see if there's any anomalies, or if there's a pattern of things. And once I start to identify a pattern or a trend, then I'll be able to more intelligently answer questions about those things, okay? But with, with using the Badger system and this new technology, still having it going simultaneously, it doesn't behoove me to sit in my office for 30 hours a day, so to speak, looking at that, because it's still ongoing. I have to get, it's like, it's like my granddaddy told me when he come back from the war. You got a guy laying in the field, you got to stop that bleeding right away. You stop the bleeding first, then you get him to safety, and then you, you mend him up. Well, that's what we got to do. We got to stop the bleeding, and then I can go back and mend it up. I can guarantee you, based upon everything I've done so far with a lot of the residents here in town, when I find an issue, I'm going to fix it and make it right. That, that's the only way to do it. Unfortunately, I realize the residents don't think it's moving as fast as they think I should be moving with it. But I'm trying to get everybody on the same page, so I can go historically and start looking at stuff.
Well, see, like that, since I've been hearing about this, since I got back on council, and, and, you know, I'm putting my experience there, you know, as, as doing it manually. And I knew that I had to do that, because if I didn't do it, the number wasn't going to match. It wasn't going to add up. And, and if, if the computer, and, and computers are good, they're great, you know, it's new technology. And I might be an old voting, but that's, that's where I'm at, you know? I'm 58 years old, and I'm okay with it. But when that reading goes in there, because it's a, it's a laptop, you know? It goes out reading, and then when it gets turned in to the ladies, it gets plugged in, and it starts throwing numbers in there. That's, that's where I always end up, that I think the computer is making, and I'm not saying it is, I'm just, I'm thinking it is. Because I can put my imaginary zero over here, and I know I'll get the right number. And I keep moving over, so, you know, you know what I mean? But the computer might say, no, I need to add three more zeros here. Boom! Then you got this big old bill. You see what I'm saying?
Right. Well, that's just like whenever we all were in 1999, right? And Y2K came along, and they had that glitch in all the computers that, it took us back.
But it is possible.
Yeah. So anything is possible.
Yes, sir.
All I'm simply trying to say is, I'm working on the problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay? But in order for me to be most effective for everybody, I have to get everybody moving forward first, so I don't have to worry about tomorrow, and then I can go back to yesteryear, and then I can begin making it right with people. And, you know, that's something that, that we will do, definitely.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of the things I've always been big on.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you a question? When the ladies are going through the bills, when they're picking out the zero usage or the high bills, what are you finding that is the problem? Is it? I mean, what is the problem? Why are they zero usage, or why is the bill, what are you finding?
Well, what I'm seeing is that sometimes it's a read problem. Sometimes when they're showing me the things, the guys are going out into the field, and they're getting a different reading than what they originally, was originally turned in, and the difference is significant, okay? At other times, I have noticed that it has been a decimal problem. But it's been a manual decimal problem, not a computer decimal problem. So, you know, do I recognize that there are some areas of opportunity? The answer is yes, but we're working on them. And, you know, you know, like Mr. Brodsky's saying, the other issue that you have with all these people who are on payment plans is like I said earlier tonight, okay? During COVID, we were one of the first municipalities to quit doing cutoffs and quit charging late fees. As a matter of fact, I know a lot of municipalities that continued to do that kind of stuff all the way through COVID, where Kennedy did not. The problem with doing that, I mean, that's great for the residents, okay? But the problem is, is if my water bill is 60 bucks a month, normal, and I can afford that, but now COVID comes along, and my income shrinks, so I know the city's being nice, they're not going to shut me off, so I don't pay my water bill this month. Well, next month, my water bill shows 120 bucks. And that adds up and multiplies and compounds just the normal charges. And like we've already discussed, it's not just water, it's water and sewer. So by the time they are able to pay and you put them on a payment plan, they do have an astronomical bill, okay? And so every month, when you get your bill, it's still going to carry over the arrears as well. So your bill's always going to be large, okay? Even if you're on a payment plan. The only way to resolve that, and, and this is really the only way to resolve that, and unfortunately, with the autonomy that the council gave me, this is not one of them, is to go back and either say, we are going to forgive everything before Co, during COVID for the residents of Kennedy, and issue credits to everybody for that, or we're going to issue credits for a portion of that. And that's really the only way to resolve that particular part of the issue. As far as, you know, Council signs your question and, and Council Rodriguez's concerns, those are all operational things that are only going to be realized after we get everybody changed over, and everybody is consistently on the new system, and we've ensured it's working to enable me and some people to go through this stuff historically and begin looking at things. And Mr. Brodsky would probably be one of the first ones I would look at, since his is so, so large and so big, and has been, well, persistent even before I even got here. So, you know, I definitely would be looking at this. You know, recently, I, the guy from Sonic reached out to me, and I sent him back an email. He's yet to call me back. I've reviewed his bill. Unfortunately, his bill doesn't meet some of the criteria that Mr. Brodsky's bill might meet. But nevertheless, that's not what the agenda item is, so the agenda mine is Mr. Brodsky. But that's, that's what I'm doing. I'm working on all that. It's, I, I just, I, I realize the perception that it's not moving as fast as everybody would hope it would move.
I wasn't really talking about the bills where people hadn't paid. I'm talking about the ones that are just astronomically high for people that are paying, okay, their regular bill. Some people are getting a $60, normal $60 bill, and all of a sudden, I'm getting people that are calling me, telling me they're getting a $400 bill, you know, for one month, and they don't have a leak. So it's, I'm not really, I understand what you're saying about what you're doing for the people that have, aren't able to pay, that's great, you know? It's a good thing for folks that aren't able to pay or lost their jobs due to COVID, and you're putting them on the payment plan like that, that's great. What I'm addressing here is the folks that are complaining that their normal bill is 60 bucks. They're paying their normal bill for 60. normal bill is sixty bucks, they're paying their normal bill for sixty dollars, and then the next month, they're getting a four hundred dollar bill. And then that's being put on a payment plan, and they're held hostage, and have to pay that bill, or lose their water. You know, so it's a matter of whether they're gonna feed their kids or pay their water. And so, that's what has to be addressed. I mean, it's already bad enough that everybody's going through COVID, and, you know, losing their jobs and everything else. If you get slammed with a four hundred dollar bill that that's not correct, and, or you lose your water, that's an essential, you need to, you gotta have your water. You know, that's, what do you pay? Your car payment or you pay your water, you know? So you're gonna have repossessed cars, because you can't make a water payment, you know? So it's, it's just snowballing, and it just needs to be resolved, you know? Uh, like I, I had suggested the easiest way to do that is those folks that come in and they've got a bill that's regularly sixty bucks, and that they can bring their bill in, for I don't know how far back you wanna go with this, you know, years or whatever, and they bring their bill in, it shows it consistent, you know, four hundred dollars, or, and then the next month is back down to sixty. I understand what you're saying about the toilet flapper and all that stuff, and that could have happened, but if, you know, some kind of fair equitable settlement can be made with them in lawyer terms, you can go back and settle with the, the people, you know, make some kind of adjustments to just kinda make everybody happy and calm this thing down. In my opinion, would be the best way to go about doing that. Average your bill out per year, and this is what your average bill is, and shot way up here for this month. Like, we know there's a water billing issue or a calculation issue or a problem like that, maybe someone did have a leaky toilet, I don't know. I, I couldn't tell you how to go, go about adjusting that. But in my particular situation, I, since this has been going on with me for over a year, I make sure I don't have any water leaks, every day. I, I, I walk through the park every single day, in the mornings, at night, we check it, because I wanna make sure I don't have any water leaks. So, if a meter's reading slow or it was reading fast, it's kinda like a radar gun, uh, it's inconsistent, and you can't predict.
Your new ones, how, how are they?
Huh?
The new ones, how are they?
Well, I got one new one. I haven't gotten my other two meters turned back on yet, because I just refused to pay it until this is resolved. And so I basically shut the park down, and I had to, I leased out the park, the, the building, to somebody else, and that's how I even have one meter on at this point.
So how's that meter been, though?
Well, that meter just got put in like a week ago, right?
Twenty-sixth.
Huh?
Twenty-fifth and-
Twenty-fifth, so.
And that.
I don't know how that's gonna go. You gotta have received the bill on that meter, and I think we went from a one inch to a three inch, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we didn't go from one to one, we went from a one to three. And, which, I guess, I personally think that's kinda overkill, and I can't get to my mailbox anymore, but, but that's what it requires, it requires that, I guess. It's pretty costly, when I was doing fine with one-inch meters, to have to replace them all for three-inch meters. I don't understand that part of it, what it's gonna cost to save, more, you know? I would, I had plenty enough water with one-inch meters. I never had a water shortage.
Mr. Lynn, you have a quick question. With the progress that we have with the city, with this new meters put in place, do you think it'd be okay if we could, I guess, test the system here and send a crew out when, a few building cycles, and make sure it's working all right, and that there's indiscrepancies, we'll, we know it's the software or something else in general?
Well, we've actually done one better than that. Uh, the individual who sold us the system comes down very frequently and does that for us. He sits down with the ladies, he looks at the system, the new stuff and that, and he actually, if he sees anything that's, that's malfunctioning or looks like it may malfunction, he's letting us know that. So, yes, sir. We, we've already been on top of that. And again, everything we've done from looking at things, a lot of what Mr. Brodsky's talking about, has not been happening since they've been going back over the bills. Everything he's talking about is, predates the initiatives I put into place. I'm not saying they don't exist, they just predate it. I have not heard anything from the clerks since we've started doing that like there was prior to that. So, and the number of payment plans is actually starting to go down as well. So it, it, it proves the system's working that we've put into place.
Well, I have no problem since, since, uh, you've put the new meter in to, to, to get this resolved, since it's been going on for a year, to go back a year and average it out for me. And I have no problem with that, to get this done.
So the question I'm gonna ask you on that, Counselor, is this. As I look at Mr. Brodsky's bill, okay, and it's important that we understand where we are, Mr. Brodsky in twen- twenty twenty only made three payments, okay? He let his bill run without making payments. So, uh, we issued him a credit in, uh, January of twenty twenty for forty-six hundred ninety-seven dollars, and ever since then, he's only made two, he's only made three total payments, uh, in that year. So, as of this, as of tonight, Mr. Brodsky owes the city of Kennedy, uh, because he had an outstanding bill he never paid, uh, prior to that, but if we just set that aside for tonight's issue, he still owes the city seventy-five hundred dollars. So when I look at the monthly amounts, I mean, the question I've gotta ask the city council is this. How do you want me to do that when he, when he hasn't, when he doesn't have a zero balance? How do I do that? If I go back twelve months, I'm gonna be running into some of the same numbers that he's been charged, that even predates his first meeting with the council, okay? Uh, you know, and so if I average all this out, then what? Do I come back for the whole year and charge him that price for the whole year for every month, and then take everything he's paid in twenty twenty, the three payments, and deduct that, and then he owes us the balance? I mean, how, how do we wanna address that part of it? Um, you know, I, I, I will tell you this, personally, if the council was willing, and Mr. Brodsky was willing, I'd be willing to call it even if he paid us half of what he owes. I'd be willing to forgive the other half of the seventy-five hundred, if he's willing to write us a check for, for half of that. So that, you know, but that would have to be the council agreeing to it and Mr. Brodsky agreeing to it. I think for him, that'd be the simplest thing.
I don't wanna pay anything less than what I owe, and I don't wanna pay anything more than what I owe. I'm fair about what I owe. If I owe it, I owe it, I owe it, okay? So, I mean, if we settle, it's a great settlement for half, but how does that, is that what I owe? You know what I mean? Do I owe half, or do I owe more than half, you know? So I may, if you average it out, I may end up owing more than half, you know? So I appreciate that offer, but I, again, I don't wanna pay any less than what I owe or any more than what I owe. I just wanna pay what I owe, that's all. And so, you know?
But would you be willing to pay the, the, the half of the seventy-five hundred?
I'd be willing to pay the seventy-five hundred if I thought I owed it.
But I guess where I'm going, Mr. Brodsky's here, okay? Let's, let's say it like this. The city council wants to extend the generosity and say, hey, we understand you've had an issue, and we wanna come to a resolution with you, okay? I'm trying to provide a, a resolution that I think, as the person they hold accountable for the finances, that's fair and equitable to both the city and to you. So what I'm saying is, regardless of whether you owe the thirty-seven hundred, if you owe forty-nine hundred, and I'm saying, we'll settle with you for thirty-seven, or, you know, half of the seventy-five, would you be willing to come pay that?
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay? Then if the council agrees to that, and you agree to that, we can move this along, and if you come down and pay that, we can zero this out, and I can get your water turned back on.
Okay. I, I don't have an issue with that, but, but where I'm going with it is, like I said, not just for me, it's for the other residents in the city, okay? Like I said, if I owe seventy-five hundred dollars, I'll pay seventy-five hundred dollars. I got the money, you know?
How, how can we, how can we resolve this tonight?
Well, we can only solve it tonight for him.
Right, right, right.
Because that is what the agenda line is.
That's it.
Going forward, what I can do is I can take things on a case-by-case basis, but it's gonna require these residents coming to City Hall and, and, you know, saying something, okay? I, I can't just blatantly do this.
Right.
Okay? Not that I want a hundred people at City Hall in one day, we have to, you know, COVID rules, but we're not so heartless that we're not gonna work with people.
That's the main-
So, Mr. Brodsky, what, what can we do tonight that would satisfy you and Pecan Grove? Would, would the half of-
I would like to see my bill just get averaged out, and then if I owe more-
That's, like he was explaining, if we do an average of twenty-twenty-
Yeah, it's gonna be way more.
It's gonna be way more than-
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your bill right here, and the thirty-seven hundred dollars for the half of the seventy-five, I think is, is a good deal. You know, here's the way I look at it, okay? We, we cut you a deal halfway, and if we end up biting the bullet on it a little bit, it's, well, kudos for your inconvenience of having to take so long, it's an additional kicker, okay? The, the object here is, we want to resolve it, we want to be done with this, we want to take care of you, we want to get you moving forward, so this is what we're saying, you know?
Mr. Lynn, does that include the outstanding bills?
That does not include the seven, the extra outstanding bill now.
That other bill, that thirteen hundred dollar outstanding bill for another property was another issue that I had several years ago with the same problem. There's one mobile home, thirteen hundred dollar bill for one month, one month, and I just didn't pay it. And you said, I'm not gonna pay that thirteen hundred for a mobile home for one month, you know? It was, that's why I just didn't pay it. So I just, it's a rental property, so I don't use it, and whoever lives there turns it on, and I'm just not gonna pay that bill. It's, it's just thirteen hundred dollars for one month is ridiculous, you know? And there's another meter.
Would, would half of the seventy-five-
I think it's probably four years old, that, that-
Oh, yeah, it goes back twenty-seventeen.
Twenty-seventeen, that's when that bill was from. That's the last time I paid that bill. It was thirteen hundred bucks for one month. I don't really know. So this has been, not just been going on recently, this has been going on for years.
Right.
And if the city would have to pay back everybody in the city for all these years of misbilling, it would be millions, you know? And so it's a problem that's been going on since way before Mr. Lynn ever got here. And so, and it's, the city's been aware of it, because there was an audit done in twenty eighteen, way before Mr. Lynn ever got here. It showed, and it was inaccurate. And I guess you've never seen about it, according to tonight, he said that to Mr. Sutton.
Do you have a copy?
I don't, but Mr. Sutton had a copy of it in his hands, and, and I've been trying to get a copy of that audit in the Open Records Act, and I haven't been able to. So the city is aware that there's been a problem for three or four years already, because it was, it was an audit done in twenty eighteen, it showed it. But yet, residents are still being told that it's a leak on their side. That's not fair to the residents. And hopefully, there is transparency from now on. And if this, this issue does get resolved. And it's an issue that came way before you came, so I can't put the blame on you. You, you, you taking the city manager job here, is it, okay, it's, it's on you, you know? But, uh, it's a mess, you know? I mean, a lot of things, like you said earlier in this meeting, in this town, are a mess. The streets, the drainage, the sewer, you know, might be a spent just carte blanche on things that are just irrelevant. We need, we need things fixed, you know? People can't put out the road without tearing the ball jumping out of their car, you know? It's just-
Are, are you in a, are you happy with the recommendation by Mr. Lynn to go with half of the seventy-five?
Thirty-seven, fifty, seventy-one.
Yeah.
And, and what do we do with the old bills?
Because if you're happy with that, I will make a motion.
Okay, so, yeah, if we were a for-profit organization, I would have written this off to a bad debt expense and taken it against our P and O. So I can, if the city council wants me to do that, I will, I will write that thirteen hundred dollars off, and if Mr. Brodsky comes down and pays the city thirty-seven, fifty, seventy-one, we'll turn his water back on.
You good with that? Are you good with that?
Do we need a motion? I'll go-
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and accept the offer and take action on, allow Mr. Bro- Brodsky to pay the city of Kennedy thirty-seven, fifty, for the out, the balance that is owed to the item that's here on the agenda, and discard the two thousand seventeen balance of thirteen sixty-four.
Is there a second?
Okay.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, can you leave a second?
We have a motion and a second? Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll?
Counselor Wen?
Yes.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Sands?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Item number fourteen, consideration and possible action in regard-
Fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, I forgot. That's the one we tabled earlier, set aside. Item number fifteen, consideration and possible action in regard to directing the city manager to seek requests for qualifications regarding engineering services pertaining to the city of Kennedy Convention Center. Do I have a motion to discuss the item?
I'll make a motion that we discuss item number fifteen. I'll second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Uh, this is just, you know, we had our little workshop and everything, and I figured it'd be a great idea if we started, and, you know, we discussed it in the workshop, to start with getting an engineer on board. So this is the formalization of that thought process, if you will.
Any discussion at this time or questions for Mr. Lynn?
I do have a question. This, the engineer would also be looking at multiple things, not right, not just one specific-
Different site.
Plan or one specific site or whatever.
Right. What we would do is, we'll put out the, we'll put out the RFQ for the engineer, and then we'll have a workshop after we get them on board and sign the PSA with them. And then what we'll do is, we'll, uh, direct them to do a study of the Nottingham area and the, um, area down there that's the four acres, and maybe even have them do their own little study as to maybe another area for, you know, whatever. Uh, but have them look at everything, so it's not just one specific area.
Any further questions or discussion? If there's no further question or discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion, um, directing the city manager to seek requests for qualifications regarding engineering services pertaining to the city of Kennedy Convention Center.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion. That was, Mr. Brodsky, a motion and a second? Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll?
Counselor Wen?
Yes.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Sands?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Three, two.
We have a vote of three in favor, two against. Motion carries. Item number sixteen, consideration and possible action regarding Mr. Scott Gordon's property, legally described as Track One, two-point-three acres, plus minus Carlos Martinez, fifteen lead grant, A dash five, and Track Two, zero-point-three acres, equal minus Carlos Martinez, fifteen lead grant, A dash six, Kennedy, Texas. Do I have a motion to consider and discuss this item?
Make a motion to consider item sixteen on the agenda.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Okay. So, Counsel, for those of you who, for those of you who were not around, um, at the P and Z meeting that we had last month, uh, what's going on here with this item and also the next item is exactly identical. These items, these developers came to the city of Kennedy, and they needed to replat this property, uh, so they could develop it, whether they wanted to put a house on it or whatever. Uh, at the time, I, I wasn't hands-on involved. We had, uh, Mr. Mead was our co-compliance individual who was handling this firsthand. Uh, supposedly, we've done everything we need to do. Well, since Mr. Mead left the city, I have found out that these items never did get presented to the P and Z, for the P and Z to recommend, yes, replat or no replat, and for them to sign the MYO arms. Uh, the P and Z did, uh, move- Uh, the PNC did move forward with signing the MyLAR and recommends that the city council also would go forward with allowing them to replat. What we just simply would need in this particular line item is for you all to just vote to let Mayor Baker sign the MyLARs and to approve the replat of this promptly, so that these guys can move forward.
Any further questions or discussion on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to have Mayor Baker sign the MyLARs to replant Agenda Item 16 as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sands?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Item number seventeen, consideration and possible action regarding metal equities property legally described as 0.44 acres plus minus JM Nichols Edition Number Two, Kennedy, Texas. A replating one lot zone, single-family SF of approximately 19,166.4 square feet plus minus into two separate lots, zone, single-family SF to consist of one lot of 8,712 square feet plus minus and one lot of 10,454.4 square feet plus minus. Um, I would entertain a motion to consider this item?
I'll make a motion to consider item seventeen on the agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? Mr. Lynn, anything further to say on this?
Same song, second verse.
Okay. Oh, any further discussion on this or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to have Mayor Baker sign the MyLARs and for Agenda Item 17 as worded, as stated. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, Leslie, second. Uh, Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sands?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All voted in favor, motion carries. Item number eighteen, consideration and possible action regarding Resolution 21-02 submission by the Kennedy Police Department for the Oakl tree's Prevention, Prepare, and Respond Project Grant to the Office of the Governor. Can I get a motion to consider this item?
Make a motion to consider item number eighteen?
No, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Chief Hatch, you have a presentation for us?
Basically, basically, this was a grant we received in October, I believe it was, from the state. Uh, funded, it's for funding for COVID supplies and also for our self-reporting module on our record management systems, so people can go online and self-report. When we got the grant, the authorizing official on the grant was Mayor Sutton. Due to whatever reason, he never would approve or would accept the grant. So we tried to change the authorizing official to the city manager, so he could approve it, but the state won't accept that because the resolution that you passed had Mayor Sutton's name. So we need a resolution appointing someone else to be the authorizing official. Uh, it can either be the mayor or the city manager, however, I'm not sure how this one's written. So that we can change the authorizing official on a grant and accept the grant. The only issue on it, uh, when I gave the template to the city manager, it has another city or another jurisdiction, that Oak or whatever, that's actually another jurisdiction, so just take that off when you pass it.
We can, now, pardon. It's late, my brain's not functioning. There's a special way we have to do this motion because I have to alter this. What we especially have to say, as amended.
Do it amended.
As amended, as amended.
As amended.
Realistic, what, what we really need to just get the grant accepted is a new resolution appointing whoever you choose to appoint as authorizing official. Uh, so we can then get that person logged in and accept the grant. It's $45,000 that we're trying to accept. They want to give us, they keep calling us here, it's pretty money and we can't.
Handle that, Mayor?
Since we're going to be amending it, counsel, the resolution did have city manager on there. If you want to change it to mayor, when I amend it, I can do it. If you want to leave it city manager, I can just amend the city's name. Just, you just have to tell me what you want.
It has mayor.
Let's just keep it city manager, probably simple to take care of.
And I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the Resolution, um, 21-02 submitted by the Kennedy Police Department for, um, prepare rapid, uh, project grant to the Office of the Governor and authorize the city manager to, uh...
They have to adopt it as amended.
It has adopted as amended.
Adopt it as amended. There we go.
I'll second.
Second, we have a second? Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Sands?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Item number nineteen, consideration and possible action regarding approving and adopting employee evaluation forms to be used for the evaluation of the performance of city personnel. Can I get a motion to consider this item?
I'll make a motion to consider item number eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. One second.
We have a motion and a second? Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Thank you.
Leslie, were you the second?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. Okay. All right, so, it's still on. So when the city council hired me, one of the things they told me that they had wanted sometime was standardized evaluation forms whereby the team could be evaluated for meritorious increases and feedback. So, a year later, guys, here we are. There is a review form in here. I don't, uh, if you're back, it looks like mine. The first one should say administrative support. This would be administrative support staff, such as our, our clerks and things of that nature. We have the criterias and the boxes for all the good stuff where we break it all down. So, Mayor, I'm gonna have to put this down, it's on both my hands. Okay, so, um, one of the biggest things that we have is, the city council, the City of Kennedy, this past budget year approved essentially a five and a half percent increase across the board with three percent coming as a COLA raise, and then the rest of the two and a half percent coming in the form of merit increases. Okay? It's very important to keep this in mind as, as you look at these. If you look at the first page of the administrative support staff, there's a box that says scoring interpretation. Uh, these things are based on a scale of one to five, and it tells you what each category is. And then you also have below that where it says OBR score, merit percent increase in matrix. That's very important because when you do meritorious reviews, the one thing you cannot do is you cannot give somebody who scores a three the same raise of mine that you give somebody that scores a five. That's just not fair, equitable, or consistent. So we have to break that down. So all those percentages you see there, those percentages are the maximum percentages for that OBR score that a person can get in a merit increase. So if someone scored a three to 3.24, had a potential 2.5% merit increase, they would get a 0.75% increase. Okay, they would get something. They wouldn't get the lion's share, they would get something because they scored at least a three. And then it goes up incrementally from there to the range of 4.5 and beyond. Okay, if you get a 4.5, you're getting the full two and a half percent that the council approved. Okay? And that's, unfortunately, when you do merit increases and reviews, that's unfortunate, that's the downside to it. Okay? So we have a review sheet for the administrative support staff, um, which is our clerks. And then the second one in there is one for the city manager. Um, so there is one for the city manager in here. Rather than... There is one for the city secretary. And then there's one for the director. The directors have their own special one that the city manager would use to evaluate the director's report. And again, these positions are all based on the same. And then you would have one for field operations. So field operations would be the individuals actually in the field. So that would be the individuals putting the pipe in the ground, laying the asphalt on the road. That would be those individuals. And then there's one for professional technically skilled individuals. Uh, that one for, uh, professional technically skilled individuals, that would be for anyone that requires a license that is not a superintendent or director. So the police officers would be on this one. Uh, all of the individuals working in the field that have to have a Class C water license or a Class D water license or whatever, they would be on this one as well. And then lastly, you have one for a superintendent, which would be our superintendents. That would be our gentleman operating our wastewater plant, our water plant, and our street superintendent. So we've got quite a few forms here, but they're kind of broken out. Uh, I did list the input in the beginning of, uh, the city secretary. She gave some heads up that the council was looking for things. That was separate, they didn't want one form for everybody, so that is why we have so many forms. They all score the same, with the exceptions of the city secretary, the city manager. They score a little different. It's a little more complex, especially on the city manager, because the city manager is graded by five people and not one. So, in order to get a score, you have to take the city manager form, each council would score the city manager. And then each of those scores would be funneled into a master score sheet, and then that would be calculated down, and then that would become the city manager's performance score. So, any questions? How often are these going to be done? Once a year? Okay, so here's the, here's the misnomer with reviews. Um, I will stand here in front of you all, and I believe I did it in council meeting. I mean, when you all hired me, I looked you in the face and said, I don't believe in these things. I don't believe them, and here's why. People don't know how to use them. They use them wrong every single time. You see, when you do an annual review on somebody, you're supposed to review them annually. Most people don't take note of what's going on all year long and keep it in their file. What they do is, it comes time and, you know, Counselor Sands is up for review, and oh my goodness gracious, I gotta get this done, I'm gonna get my review sheet out. Okay, let me think back here. I go back ninety days in my mind, and I give her a year's review on ninety days worth of work. And that's not right. So if we're gonna use these reviews, what I'm recommending everybody do is we do two reviews a year. And we're gonna do one review at the six-month mark, so we can get a capture of our team in six months. And then we have it on paper documented how they performed for the first six months. And then when it comes time for the annual review, instead of having to pull out a folder that supposedly has all these notes in it, we can pull this out to remind us that, okay, they had these areas of opportunities, we said they were gonna work on this, you know, where they are today, and then we can give a more accurate annual review. And that's really the only way we can do this and do this effectively and fairly to the, to the employees. So, you know, with the exceptions, and I hate to say this, but with the exceptions of the city manager, that's the way I'm saying it. So...
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
What does, excuse me for interrupting, what does our policy manual say that when, like on our, is it ninety days? Is it six months? What is, cause I have, I'm not familiar with the policy manual for a new, for a new hire.
The, uh, the, um, I'm drawing a tongue twist here. Handbook. The grace period, if you will, probationary period is ninety days.
Ninety days.
Okay, so what we would do for a new employee is, they would get one of these in ninety days, okay? Then they would get one at the six-month mark, so another ninety days later. And then they would get one six months later at the annual mark. And then from that point on, they should get one every six months. The first one would not be for a raise, it would just be performance. Here you are today, snapshot, here you are today, this is what you need to work on. And then the annual one would be for the merit increases. And that's how we would have to use these in order to use them properly.
Do we have any ordinances or policies in place that we would have to amend to, to do that?
To do this?
Like, like, you know, like, is there something in place currently that says you have to do it once a year, and we'd have to amend it to do it twice a year?
No. When we have an ordinance that says you gotta do it once a year, that's the minimum. You have to do it once a year.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to go back and change an ordinance?
No, we wouldn't have to go back and change an ordinance just to be able to do it, you know? Cause actually, I could if I wanted. I could actually evaluate my staff monthly if I wanted. Uh, and as long as I sit down once a year with them and say, okay, guys, here we are, then we're compliant.
Okay.
Any further question?
Was any of this based off of any other, like, city doc, I mean, other cities, other municipalities?
I reached out to a lot of cities that have people who have HR after their name, and they have letters like SPHR, PHR, you know, that kind of stuff. They drew up these documents, and I amended them to work for us here in City of Kennedy.
Any further questions for Mr. Lynn? Any discussion on this item?
So just, so just because we said they're, they're awarding the COLA merits are whatever we tell them, they still have to score in order to receive them, they're not just gonna automatically get them?
Right, you have...
Making sure, everybody, everybody's aware of that, just because we said everybody's there, but these evaluations will determine exactly what you're gonna get. It's not just automatic, it's, it's, uh, you gotta work for it still.
Right. The COLA? But there's, there's, there's two pieces to that, though. There's a piece that they will automatically get.
Okay.
The merit piece is the piece that they will have to earn.
Based on their score.
But there is a, um...
Cost of living. Cost of living, that's all. If the council so chooses and...
We've already, we've, we've already put it in this year.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but every year you review that.
Right, every year.
And if the council chooses not to give a cost of living adjustment, they don't have to.
Right, exactly. But, but keep it in mind, we operate, we operate on a budget, okay? And we operate on the finance, and if they only spend money in order to the adopted budget, therefore, we set it with the percentages as to what they are, so that it's there, so that the people earn. We don't have to come back and do budget. Budgeting them every time we do an employee agreement.
Because remember, our, our employees also get, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, we still have longevity pay. So that's a type of bonus also that they get. The longer they stay with us, they get a bigger check.
Yes.
And not every city has that.
Yes, you're right. Any further questions or discussion? There's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on this?
I'll go ahead and accept, take action on accepting the, and adopting the employee evaluation forms that'll be used for evaluation of the performance of city personnel at the City of Kennedy.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion carries. Item number twenty. Consideration of possible action regarding scheduling a hearing in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 370.002 regarding the review modification and extending of the City of Kennedy Juvenile Curfew Ordinance found in Chapter 62, Article 2, Division 2 of the City of Kennedy Codified Code of Ordinances. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Make a motion to discuss item twenty.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you have a presentation?
Okay, so every three years, we have to redo the juvenile ordinance in the City of Kennedy. It's up, actually, so we actually have to address it. But as I got to reading everything, I had this ready code of the ordinance for the moment and read the code and saw we had to have a hearing first. So we have to have a hearing first before we can pass the ordinance. So that's what this is, is to establish a date and time for the hearing. Okay? Now, I'll make a suggestion. Look ahead one more to item 21. We gotta schedule a date and time for that as well.
We'll put those two together.
I would recommend highly that we put them both together and do the hearing for workshop. Okay, the only, the only thing is, we technically can't set the date for the workshop until we get to item 21.
So we table 20 to get to 21, and then we can put them together?
We can do that. You can table it. Very good. You can table it. We can go to 21, and then we can pick it up off the table after 21, and then do it like that.
I'll make a motion. I table item number 20.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Nguyen? Yes. Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 21, consideration of possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing items related to modifying the city council rules of decorum. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I'll make a motion to consider Agenda Item 21.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Mr. Lynn?
Okay, so originally, when we discussed this before, this was going to be to modify the decorum rules as to how you guys conduct business, okay? It's an overarching part of the code. It's a very lengthy part. It does include things like the agenda preparation and things of that nature. There are different sections for all of that. So what we would be doing would be taking on this whole project, this whole section of the ordinance to redo everything and set up the agenda the way the new mayor may be, and the council would want the agenda to work and things of that nature. So as well as protocols of speaking and all of those. So we would need to have a workshop to do the same because this is gonna take a little while.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn or discussion on this item?
Do y'all wanna try to do it?
How's February 23rd sound? Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today. Works for me. Can't do it?
What day can you?
The 24th.
Wednesday, the 24th? Will that work for everybody?
Maybe that. I don't know.
Y'all really wanna do it on church night? Said, y'all really wanna do it on church night?
I know, Wednesday's always church night.
I wanna do it on Monday.
Monday, the 22nd?
Monday, the 22nd's 4B.
Thursday, the 25th?
Thursday, the 25th is free.
Thursday, the 25th work for everybody? Okay. Well, then, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a workshop for the city council rules of decorum discussion, I guess, for February 25th.
At 6:00 PM?
At 6:00 PM.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. We can return to item number 20, consideration of possible action regarding scheduling a hearing in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 370.002 recording regarding the review modification extending of the City of Kennedy Juvenile Curfew Ordinance found in Chapter 62, Article 2, Division 2 of the City of Kennedy Codified Code of Ordinances. Have a motion to consider the item?
Need a motion to pick it up off the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a motion to pick it up off the table?
Make a motion that we take item 20 off the table.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, any further on this?
No, sir. We just, I would just recommend maybe doing it, you know, before the, before the workshop. Again, it's every three years, so it really predates me. I don't know how many people attended the last one. We could maybe do it at 5:45 would be my recommendation. That's up to y'all, but that would be my recommendation.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we schedule the hearing in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 370.002 regarding the review modification and extending of the City of Kennedy Juvenile Curfew Ordinance found in Chapter 62, Article 2, Division 2 of the City of Kennedy Codified Code of Ordinances for 5:45 PM on February 25th.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion carries. Before we move to item number 22, Mr. Lynn, there is, there is one item that I would like to request for our next monthly meeting in March, and that is for consideration and possible action in regard to the annual evaluation of the performance of the city manager. So having stated that, we can move to item number 22, adjourned. We have a motion. I understand we don't need a vote for, meeting adjourned.